All right, thank you everyone. We are back in our committee of the whole meeting. This is sort of a continuation of our budget meeting, the Budget Troce, and I'll pass it over to the staff to hopefully outline today for the next quarter or at least ish.
Thank you Mayor Heintzmann. Linda Glende, CEO here at the District of Squamish. I'm here with Tanya Bastian, our financial analyst, who has been working diligently on the budget since we last met with you. We have some updates in terms of what the budget looks like following your discussion around putting things out, taking them out. We have some updates on what's impacting it the other way as well, which we'll get into in detail. Tanya will go through with you the agenda for this afternoon, and there are some elements that you wanted us to come back and talk to you about, namely, the potential housing coordinator position, some more information and data about bylaw, the marine strategy. So those three things staff were prepared to speak to, but we will interleave those in as we go through the presentation when they make the most sense. So at this time, I'll pass it over to Tanya. And Christine Matthews, our CFO, has a family issue and couldn't be here with us today, but Tanya and I believe we got it.
Thank you. Thank you. So I just wanted to start off by indicating that we always want to hear from our public, but we particularly want to hear from the public right now. And if the public wants a say in what is done in 2017, and how much that may cost taxpayers, we ask that they weigh in. So there are multiple different avenues to weigh in to attend the meetings. There's email, budgetfeedback@squamish.ca, or council@squamish.ca, following Twitter at Squamish Town, and hashtag SquamishBudget. And there's also the Squamish website. Next up, just an overview of the schedule highlights. So we've moved through December. We're in January, currently working through our workshops and working towards the public information meeting. Followed by in February, our financial plan bylaw, and in April, our property tax review, and in April and or May, our property tax bylaw. And we are working towards the date of January 31st for the public information meeting, which I'll touch on in our next slide as well.
So that's next Tuesday.
Yes.
This is the public open house for the public coming comment of the budget. So I think what we're hoping to at the end of the day is have the budget to the point where we can go to the public, here's the draft. It still is open for tweaking, fine tuning, taking out, adding in input from the public, but it sort of allows us to have a document representing to the public as a draft.
Yes, that is definitely the goal for today.
Okay.
Do we have a rough idea what the pieces are?
Well, let's, we don't know yet because we're going to go through the whole day. At the end of the day, we'll hopefully have an idea of where we are.
Following that, for the agenda, we're doing a review of the utility funds, which should be quick. There are very few changes, and we've already adopted the related fee bylaws. Following that, we'll have our general fund review. We'll provide a quick update of where we are, followed by a capital plan review, review of our service level changes, and our special operating projects. Following that, we'll have our next steps, and our last agenda item will be the court property taxation, which we'll touch on as well. Again, as Mayor Heintzmann indicated, our goals for today, comfort with the proposed budget for utility funds and general fund, especially bringing to the public. We want to clear any parking lot or any other outstanding issues, which Glende has already discussed, and also obtaining directions on next steps. So discussing the public meeting, we've discussed the date as well as the format, and to obtain, you know, an idea of what we want the key questions for public to be. So we'll take a moment here. I think we've provided updated packages, and we're going to be looking at our utilities funds, which should be the first bits of folded paper, and that would be sections, for sections four and five of your binder. So there's updated information, which has been printed and placed for you. Yeah, so the first package should be our utilities. Section four is our utility capital. Oh. Okay. So we'll be starting with our utilities capital plan, which is section, it starts section four. And we have the capital plan for utilities funds on page 4-1. Okay? Okay?
4-1?
4-1. So in relation to the utilities capital plan, for solid waste, there were no changes to any of the, just their vertical expansions of landfill. For water, we have removed the master run-of-river project. So for that particular item, there was no effect on fees in 2017, but there was a decrease of pressure on fees of $133,000 in 2018. And for sewer, we had an addition of the sewer main right-of-way. The project totals $20,000, but will be funded by $20,000, so there is no effect on fees. So overall, the only change that we've had in our capital plan for utilities in relation to the effect on our fees is a decrease of $133,000 in 2018.
So that's on the financial, five-year financial plan?
On the financial, five-year financial plan, yes.
So I just had a question about the IPP project. From what I understood from council, is that the work removing it, we were not looking at putting the extra work in this year's budget, but leaving it forward?
Okay, so you want to move it?
Yeah, so I guess there's a debate about the pros and cons of keeping it in capital plan, so that we can touch on it again next year. I think we're looking at intent, and perhaps look at leaving the door open for partnership opportunities, or some other way of funding it if we so chose that it was a good investment to make or not. So at this point, as Councilor Schell is asking, and I agree, is it, we're taking out the financial plan in next years, or should we just reflect on it again next year? Because it's not impacting though.
Yeah, there's no impact to 2017. So we could, if we want to, I think if there's a desire to make sure that we reflect on this, and that it is a project that we move forward on, but the timing is to be determined, then my suggestion would be to push it out. So I can do that. Let's just push it out, start in 2018. There will be no effect to the fees in 2018, but we have a pickup in 2019.
2019, so just move it over here?
Yes.
Okay, because we'd have to do something then. Or is it, yeah?
I was just going to ask Tanya about the capital portion of it. So there's the initial $200,000 to look into further permitting and the operating of it, or the design, and then there's the large capital outlay. So would that affect the long-term financial plan if that was stayed, it's locked in?
Okay, I might need...
So a philosophical discussion, it's not something we 100% are committed to doing. However, we don't want to, we're not throwing it out too. So how do we, how do we interpret that in our financial plan? Or is there an opportunity to have on-deck stuff? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know, like, it doesn't make sense to keep it in the financial plan as a hypothetical, or is the financial plan really supposed to be reflecting our commitments to the future specifically? Although, of course, we can go back and forth depending on the year. I just philosophically, how we would assess what we feel.
Mayor Heintzmann, I would say from where I sit, that the financial plan should be what we're committed to doing, because it is a bylaw and a commitment. That said, what I'm hearing from council is you don't want us to completely turn off the idea, but keep an open mind on are there other ways that we can do this that are feasible, and look for those opportunities outside of what staff recommended, which was don't spend the $200 on something where our return isn't going to be enough versus other projects.
Hydro rates may change dramatically in the future, which may dictate one or the other, there's so many variables. Uh, Councilor Elliott?
Well, I mean, the one thing that we come back to every year is the strategic plan that we knew about, or we kept it there, but didn't put it in the financial plan, then that would mean that at the beginning of every year, we've got to reconsider that as a decision point.
Is that a logical place to, that makes sense, anybody? Okay, thanks. Yes, Councilor Elliott?
So I know I mentioned this before, but I still get a little bit concerned when I see carryover projects, or like, especially in sewer, that total more than a million dollars that we've carried over. So we taxed for it last year, charged utility fees for last year. And I just want to make sure that we didn't overload 2017, so that again, actually something that we actually won't get to just from a capacity issue. And, you know, all the things in gray are being carried forward from 2016. So there's one there for a million dollars that we still have $950,000 carrying forward into this year, and one for $600,000, and those add up. And I just think we've got to be careful, because we really can't do it in a year. So I'm not saying that this should change, it's just I get concerned when I see, when you add up all those carried forwards, we should be taxing for the work that we're going to do that year.
So if I could speak to that, in some instances, or in multiple instances, these projects are actually multi-year projects. So we do have the, there is a timing element considered, it's just that it could be that the design was started in 2016, with construction expected in 2017. So there is some variation. We have, the first column is our total cost, and that includes all years of the project. And again, in some of these instances, it's a multi-year project. So not necessarily that it was flagged for 2016 and has just carried over because we haven't gotten the work done, it's just that it has been started and will continue in And if I may, we're just collecting the data right now regarding carryforward projects. So the items that have been started and still have to be finished, and taxed in 2016.
I think what Councilor Elliott is speaking is, we don't want to be, we want to be accomplishing all the projects and all the phases of the projects, and the years and the timeframe that is scheduled, so that we're not getting behind, and we're not committing to more than we can actually do, and we're just being a little frugal in how we do that. So appreciate that sometimes these things, you know, whatever reason, get started playing and bridge over different gears, but I think it's more making sure we're really being thoughtful about what we can accomplish in any given timeframe and any given project.
Yeah, I mean, if we can only do the planning, then we should only be taxing for the planning in that tax year. We're not going to get to the capital expenditure until the following year, and that is the year in which I think it should show up in the, in the plan. And so, you know, in that number 16, you know, just over a million dollar budget hit, but the majority of it obviously wasn't going to be spent in 2016, and sitting up there for $950,000 this year. So anyway, there might be other information that I'm not aware of at this time, but I just want to make sure that we're, for those big projects, we're really thinking about when the money gets spent.
Then, do you want to quickly respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, I hear, Council, and that's certainly a filter we put on with staff, is make sure when we're taxing for, taxing for special projects or utility projects, that we are, you know, washing our capacity in terms of what we can deliver. This number 16 is an example, and maybe Tanya can correct me, but what I'm seeing is that $835,000 of it is funded from operating this year. So I'm not sure what the carryover is for that unless the design happens this year, which is how often engineering does schedule projects. So you'll see, you know, $100,000 one year, and then the big hit the next year for the construction. And I'm assuming some of these are like that, some of these may be that we didn't get to them, but I, without digging into each line item, I can't speak to that, but appreciate the comment, definitely.
Now, Councilor Elliott?
Well, I guess it was a similar comment, because I get the point about not taxing unnecessarily, I think we all understand that, but with a lot of these capital projects, we actually don't start paying until we spend the money. We actually write the check, and the money goes out the door. And so in some cases, it's from borrowing, and I think, but correct me if I'm wrong, that in the case of borrowing, might have authorized the bylaw, but we actually don't start paying interest until we draw down the funds, which might be in the following year, if that's when the work is actually done. And in this case, the impact of spending the money in 2017 is that's, that's when it will happen, is it will come out of the operating budget in 2017, if it's in the plan for 2017. Am I correct in saying that?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, especially if it's from, but if it's from revenue, it's a different story.
Okay.
Next, I'd like to touch on the utilities operating budgets, which start in section five of your binder. And specifically with the next slide, we're looking at page 5-4 of your binder. I have highlighted a few items that have changed since we last met in relation to the utility funds in November, and I just want to touch on the larger changes that we've had. In relation to the utility fee increases, the solid waste fees have changed based on the adopted bylaw for the collection fees and the landfill tipping fees. So overall, the fees for solid waste decreased by approximately $38,000 based on the adopted bylaws. And I should mention that we'll be touching on a little bit later, but that's essentially offset by the removal of one of the special projects for solid waste.
So does council have that updated one in their book?
Yeah, that should have been...
It's just not highlighted.
Yeah, it's just not highlighted, sorry.
Yeah, but my 5-4 doesn't say what's up there, it's the old version.
So it should have been included in the package that was provided to you? The updated information.
My 5 was paperclip to my 4, so if you put that whole first paperclip in section four, maybe that's...
Might have done that. Okay. Keep going. Oh, you're ready, let's go.
Yeah, okay. I've also highlighted the other existing service level adjustments. So in relation to water, we've had a small increase in relation to insurance, $1,000. And for sewer, there was an increase, $25,000 in relation to biosolids removal, there is an update in relation to the tipping fee, and just over $2,000 in relation to insurance. The change in allocations from other funds, the variance from our previous presentation is pretty, is quite small, and it's mainly driven by changes in engineering and public works administration labor, as well as fleet allocations. And in relation to the reserve contributions, that was an increase for both water and sewer for the amounts highlighted, and that is in relation to the equipment replacement Lastly, for debt service, we have updated water for additional debt servicing costs, so just over $15,000. Sewer, we've determined that there was a particular debt drop-off in relation to sewer, so that decreased because there was only one interest payment in 2017. And solid waste, the debt service costs increased by approximately $23,000.
Okay, any questions? Sounds good.
Okay. So next, we'll move on to our water and sewer service level changes, and that would be page 5-6 in your binders. And since we, there haven't been any changes in relation to these service levels, service level items, I just wanted to allow council a moment to essentially reacquaint yourselves with the levels that we had. Okay? And next up, we have the solid waste service level changes, which is also page 5-6 in your binders. And the one item that I wanted to draw your attention to is that we've removed solid waste contract services of $30,000. So as I was mentioning earlier, that offsets essentially the decrease in the solid waste Future literal service, future service level changes in relation to water, in 2018, we have water meter installations, just based on the capital project.
And just for clarification purposes, is the water meter in our own infrastructure?
Yes.
Correct? I just don't want people to go, Tanya, your house is going to get a water meter minute.
It's ours.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that is...
And lastly, for future year service level changes in solid waste, we have fluctuation with our waste audits, so essentially adjusting to biannual audits, and some solid waste contract service adjustments. That was in page 5-7 on your binder. So if there aren't any questions in relation to these items, I'd like to move on to special And what you see on the slide right now is essentially what's provided on page 5-9 in your binders. So you can see the particular projects that we have for water and sewer, and there have been no changes since we last reviewed in November. And for solid waste special projects, we have the multi-family organics collection And lastly, for future year special projects, we have the plateau thunderbird reservoir condition assessment for water, being $50,000 in 2019 and 2020. And for sewer, we have a source control effectiveness study of $10,000 in 2018. With that, that's the end of our review of utility funds.
I know I brought this up, and the budget here is natural assets, and the only one that I'm really concerned about, as far as natural assets is concerned, is our water supply and understanding glacier recession in the future, because we do rely on that one bylaw, on one glacier for our water supply, and we do have the ability to measure its recession, because we've been taking pictures since Monday. So I just wonder if we understand where our resources come from enough to be able to say that if this glacier starts receding, that our water supply is protected, and if not, we'll be looking at other areas. If it's expanding, that would be awesome, but I don't think we really know, and if we can, photograph, looking at the photographs, we can see that it's receded. So I just wonder if your entire town's water supply is based on this single glacier, if that's, if it's not prudent to be able to measure that, and whether that goes into utilities, if that can be considered a utility?
Yeah, and particularly its effect on our aquifers, that I think is what Councilor Schell is speaking to. And a couple of years ago, we did sort of talk about our lack of an understanding and appreciation of our aquifers and longevity and all that sort of thing. So I guess the question is, I'm not saying this year, I don't think Councilor Schell is saying necessarily this year, but at some point, where would that work go in terms of the budget? Would it go into the water utility? Would it go into, and at what point do we make sure we're getting a handle around? Because I, and maybe my record is wrong, but I thought a couple of years ago, you know, I mean, it's not imminent, but maybe in 50 years it's imminent, maybe in 100 years it's imminent, and getting a broader understanding of our aquifer and its capacity and longevity is important.
Mayor Heintzmann, through the water master plan that was presented by David Rolston, this was covered. I have the details in front of me in terms of studying the recession of the glacier, but I do know they projected out the water supply without having it in front of me at my speech, but I don't know if Mr. Buxton can add?
Maybe it's a, it's a simple question, is, would this type of work be put in the water utility, or is it something that should be contemplated in the general fund?
If it was, no, probably would be best in the water utility, because it's a long-term resilience initiative, so yeah, we would be, I don't think there's any urgency for it. The water master plan did, as far as we can see, into the future, to the aquifer's fairly robust now, 100 years from now. So, I mean, that's a particular study that we could sweat for a few few years if council sent the...
Well, and it's suspected, dictated in the water master plan, so I don't want to look at pot and say, oh, something that's in a document somewhere, leave us.
In our water master plan, we started our aquifers, we don't start a glacier, and we consider the aquifers to be robust, that they are supplied by a glacier. So we may think it's robust for 100 years, without understanding its recession, it's almost impossible to say that it's going to be 100 years or 20 years. And if it is, it would be dependent on the glacier recession to clearly understand if our aquifers are going to be robust or not. And when you start measuring out the aquifer, and you see that it's full, it's easy to think that it's going to be full forever, because it's based on a large chunk of ice, but I don't need to have to mention climate change, I think all of our councilors understand that we don't, we aren't clear on what the future is going to bring, and it would be, we have the data to be able to robustly do this within our district, it would just take actually putting it into our water utility, so.
There aren't any other questions, or any thoughts that we've missed anything in relation to the utility funds, then I believe we can move on to our general fund. Please do. And I'd also like to take a moment right here to address the additional documentation that was provided to you. So we have updates for sections six and seven.
Does anyone else want to write anything? Maybe bring in a name, bring the whole box in, see if you've got one. All right, so everyone thought there's section six in their binders? And seven, or two, or should be six? And just to confirm, they haven't updated online, so?
Yes, yeah.
So some of these pages weren't in your press, like, there's no new 6-4.
Yes, I was maintaining the...
So anything that doesn't have a change on it, won't be included in the new pieces?
You just have to figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. So before we move into our general fund overview, I just wanted to touch base again on what, what we know, this is what we don't know. And we will get into more detail, but we do know the existing service level impact on tax revenue requirements and the impact of new initiatives if they're selected. We have an expectation of a larger assessment base in 2017. But again, we don't know what those changes will mean to the taxpayers. And as I've already mentioned, we were collecting the information from the projects carried forward to 2017 and 2016. So next up, we have our general fund highlights, and I'll be passing it over.
Mayor Heinzman, since our last budget workshop, we have a couple of additions to the budget, which are substantial. Contribution to equipment reserve, when finance went back, it had not been in the budget previously. So may I call up from staff, that that's not in there, but it's upwards, it's two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. Additionally, with general fund, with the dentville park, the amount covered by DCCs is actually less than what we had originally thought. So if we go with the same size of budget item for the dentville park, then that's an additional thirty-three thousand dollars that was not contemplated in the budget. We have a few other smaller issues, but essentially where we got to is an additional three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars in the budget that was not last week.
Council, we need to let council breathe.
Yep, so you guys just absorbed that, I got that last night and have had a few hours more than you to absorb that. Council has come up with some, or staff has come up with some ideas to offset this, and in fact, I can't take the credit, it was actually Mayor Heinzman, because I went in to debrief her before we came in here and she helped us out with that. So we'll present that and then council can discuss it, but do you need a few more minutes to-
No, let's dig in.
Absorb, okay. So there are some other detailed, smaller increases that are less than fifty thousand that I can speak to as well. It was the contribution to reserve, it was the biggest hit. The good news is the carbon neutral reserve, we can reduce by twelve-five. Decrease in special assessments and payment in lieu of taxes from utilities. Because of that, the amount went up by close to thirty-seven thousand. It will be offset by some additional rental revenue from the lease at the Copper Coil restaurant. Change in provision contributions, thirty-four thousand, mainly due to the addition of provision for the OCP. So this is one of those projects, we're similar to an election now, we've started budgeting cyclically to update the OCP. And so we've added twenty thousand dollars for that. Increase in community amenity provision contributions, fourteen thousand, again offset, sorry, what's that?
It's offset by a slight decrease to our forestry building provision.
And then, yeah, the thirty-three was the one, okay? So thirty-three thousand additional for the dentville park based on DCCs. While you're digesting that, I might as well give it all to you at once. The smoke bluffs parking lot was originally in the draft DCC bylaw. When the inspector of municipalities approved the list, the smoke bluffs parking lot was not included. It was rejected essentially, so staff proposed it, but it's not currently in our bylaw. And so again, an apology, a staff mistake, that we thought was a DCC project, it is not. So to complete that project, it would be taxing for a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Would you like us to get into the proposed solution at this time, now that we feel we're, let's do that, bad news? So what we originally thought was, despite it not being good practice and part of our financial policy, was to go back and borrow for some of the paving. But as mentioned, we're debriefing the mayor on this, so that it wouldn't be a complete bomb today. Was rather than borrow for paving, which is not good practice because it's more of an operational annual maintenance, is finding some capital projects that are actually assets and pooling them. So we don't, our policy isn't to borrow for anything less than three-hundred thousand. But in this case, given this last minute and unexpected large hit, was looking for some things that are capital assets that are less than that amount that we could borrow for. And these are in the general capital plan, if you'd like me to point them out to you, I'll try and find the numbers.
And maybe, and it could be long-term borrowing, depending on what the asset is. Or it could be short-term borrowing, depending on what the return on investment is, for example, that might actually pay for it back. So, and I think just to sort of reiterate, in our financial strategy and council planning, we want to be able to do these smaller projects through a revenue source. But in any given year, you might have twenty small projects, and another year you might have five small projects. So it's not actually, we do have a sort of threshold that we're trying to achieve, but it can still fluctuate within that. So all my, the only thing I said to staff was, are there projects in there that are bringing us a return on investment that we could short-term borrow for? For example, totally delighting, or know some things that actually will actually save us money in two or three years. And maybe we short-term borrow for those, or things that are actually going to be part of our capital infrastructure for seventy years, and we long-term borrow for that, depending on the project. But so totally up to council to determine how and how we sort of maneuver that. But that's sort of the opening up of the envelope. And it's still obviously up to council to determine exactly what's in there and what's not.
So the thought, the thought was for the particular projects that we could include in this pool for borrowing, on your capital plan, page six-one, starting with page six-one, and this would be the updated information that's been provided. We're looking at item number twelve, being the tantalous fire hall roof, or sorry, fire hall roof over apparatus bay, with a budget of a hundred-and-sixty thousand hitting operating in 2017. Second would be item thirteen, being the tantalous fire hall overhead door replacement, with a sixty thousand dollar hit to operating in 2017. And lastly, we would be looking at item fifty-one. So if you slip over to page six-two, we were thinking of the Brennan Park Arena backup generator replacement. And that item has an amount of a hundred-and-fifteen thousand fully funded by operating. So we've got three items, we're looking at having a pool of three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars that we could take borrowing.
And, and the rationale is these are big asset project, projects that'll be with us for twenty to seventy years, depending on the project. And so going long-term borrowing makes some sense, it's not necessarily an equity thing or a short-term fix or that type of thing. So I'm just, just to paraphrase the rationale.
Thank you, and after the last meeting, we were talking about the adventure center parking lot issues. We spoke with Ms. Matthews about bringing forward some possible cost estimates for the expansion of the smoke bluffs parking lot, which I guess was already in the financial plan. But also for, it was discussed at that meeting, for the possibility of moving the parking lot into a downtown location. And there was a location that was highlighted by staff in our presentation and the cost of it. And also some sources of funding, because I didn't think we were in the mood to just add it to taxation at that point. So I, I kind of get where staff is going, I didn't want to lose those two things, at least to have a discussion, whether we wanted to, as a council, proceed with them or not, and if so, how we might fund them. And to deal with that, and whether we think about borrowing, are there reserves that might hit it? I get the point we don't want to add it to taxation, but are there other ultimate sources of funding for those? Assuming we want to proceed with it, I tell this council.
I do want to, we do have a parking action plan or strategy that we talked about last summer and adopted. Doesn't touch on the smoke bluffs, but it covers on a whole bunch of aspects of downtown parking. And I think any kind of parking lot, you have to do a context with the whole, the whole downtown aspect of the parking issue too. So I'm not sure, Gary, do you want to reflect on the rest of this? We, we do have a number for the smoke bluffs part, because it has been in the, it was actually, it was in last year's financial plan to be done this year. And it, it got bumped for capacity, staffing capacity issue related to, we don't have enough staff to do all the projects we want to do. But my understanding is because the ITP wasn't acted on this year, that there may be a capacity potential, but that doesn't help us with the money source because it's a different fund. So just, Gary?
Both, both are the location, downtown was flagged as a potential location for a, what's called a mode. It's, I forget which item it is, but it's a mode shift, so it's essentially for the place to do the-
Arkham Road.
Arkham Road, yeah. So it says opposite chief, it says opposite chief and centers. So it's consistent with the strategy.
Yeah, not the chief and law, the chief and center, right? So that if, where Lagers Lane and Pemberton and Hunter Place, there's that strip near the old substation, or the substation, it's right there, that was earmarked in the parking strategy last year for a mode shift type.
So I have the parking strategy in front of me, and it says that we need to do a parking utilization study in downtown area to determine if we have supply issues or how close to need parking we might be. Do we have a problem, or are we facing it soon? And we need to do a commuter survey, so there's not a thing, it's in the downtown parking. It says identify a location in the parking structure. So the strategy actually says to look for a location, staff has already found that location, I assume, for-
Yeah, we've been in a couple of plans, yeah. Is the parking strategy currently in the budget? Yeah, it's in the budget this year.
The implementation for 2017 will put in the, of Spain. Have I put that in?
And how much was that?
Fifty?
So there is fifty thousand, it was currently in the budget to act on some of the implementation pieces from the parking strategy that was adopted last summer.
So that strategy doesn't really, it's more studying. So it's fifty thousand dollars to study parking problems more?
What are we getting for a fifty thousand dollars?
It was an evaluation, studying location of the potential parkage and park and lot. If I had to remember, it was three parts of it.
And can you just look at that? So I'm interested in how are we moving all the buses and the drop-off and pickup for the commuter services downtown? Because that would require a substantially larger piece of work. So we're thinking of doing all that, we need to think about where our buses currently go and how they will now come into downtown and what impacts traffic. So the traffic studies are going to be needed, because we can't just put park and ride where the buses don't come into our, because it's commuter service to make the difference, it's like to bring commuters into the downtown, where our economy needs to park as well, so I'm just curious to know.
And there's one commuter bus, but it's a lot of people just congregating here, everyone getting to the thing, some parks.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding, what I sort of envisioned is that the buses, like the Pacific Coach and those things, would still be operating under the adventure center, but they're not really a commuter service, they're a tourism service. But that Spanish connector, which is a smaller bus, would potentially, you know, move there, pick up drop-off location. We don't think that, hopefully that would require extra infrastructure, a small bus.
Can I, I'll tell you again.
Sorry, I just wanted to mention for the parking strategy implementation, the amount is twenty-five thousand in 2017. I just wanted to make a note of that.
And my understanding was more implementation of some of the initiatives that were outlined in last summer's strategy than, than it did include a comprehensive program to reconcede parking in the downtown, that's my understanding, but I could be wrong.
Mr. Buxton would have to speak to it.
Thanks, so it's interesting to think about it being for one bus, but if we want regional transportation, we have to plan for the future. So regional transportation is going to take a larger bus and is going to come from other locations. So we will need to drive the bus, and that was originally the intention of the adventure center, was to accommodate those large bus structures for economic movement and to accommodate up and down the corridor, including to Whistler. So I'm hoping it won't be a small bus for long, because our congestion is going to pace our ability to move people very, very quickly. So whatever strategy you imagine, and it's identify a location and size of potential, intercept parking lot structure for visitor parking, the support for the visitation and tourism sector. And parking structures should have the street landscape, the commercial, meet-to-design modern, enforce downtown parking restrictions, education outreach for businesses, and review options for paid parking and substantial outreach. But the biggest one was to coordinate location.
And so are you saying that twenty-five thousand isn't enough to get us going in 2017?
I'm not sure if you could find a, if we're outsourcing this, maybe we can do it in-house, and that would be better when you're big. But it would take traffic study and long-term scoping, and it's quite a robust problem. Because if you, if you can adjust paving area for temporary parking, that's one thing. But a strategy, I would imagine, is a long-term strategy, so you could actually have a hub. And I know council imagined that we would have a transportation hub in our downtown. I just don't, can't imagine right now how the circulation of traffic would be impacted by drawing bus traffic into our downtown. But if that's possible.
I, I hope that, my suggestion would be for us, any kind of regional transit or transportation, I think we should keep that separate from the municipal budget, because my, my expectation would be that we are only going to get a regional transit when we come up with a regional way to pay for it, i.e. motorfield tax. And I would expect that if we have that regional funding, some of that would go towards the necessary infrastructure, land acquisition for these types of things. I don't think we as a district have the capability to pay for something like that.
And ironically, or not ironically, but interestingly, that it's pretty easy to get capital funding through other grant programs for transportation infrastructure, it's really hard to get it for transportation operations. So, you know, they, they would love to spend money on capital stuff for transit, but if you can't afford to operate it, then you don't, you go with the money. So a bit of a catch, what do you think?
Sorry, in terms of the parking strategy for 2017, was the inventory and utilization studies, so figuring out what, what, how it's used, and then a review of the cash, cash in lieu of parking. And subsequent in 2018, the next ones were potential sites for parkage, options for paid parking, and trailhead recreational.
And that's 2018?
Yeah, so the regional transit hub is sort of a few years ahead. This is, I think, really a bit of a stopgap, isn't intended to be regional transit.
Not regional transit, but just a hub, it's not-
I think it's really meant to-
Park and ride is for people who shoot down, so it's not for people coming around.
I think the one, the one, the hydro station, if we did anything, it's really interim to move the, that one function from the adventure center into downtown, not look at the economy, and so that's a much bigger, council letting also much bigger issue. That's a much bigger, that's a much bigger issue.
And possibly taking pressure off some other parking rides, like the one at Hospital Hill. And take into account that it does impact other parking issues in the downtown, having parking rides in certain places. So it does have to be comprehensive, that will. Okay, so in the meantime, there's $25,000 in the budget this year to do that analysis stuff. And hopefully, I'm hopeful we can do some upgrades of some of our current areas so we can maximum, very minimal maximize the usage of those parking areas. Where are we on this now?
We might be repeating ourselves. So just back to our recommendation to borrow for the combination of three projects that equals $335,000.
Predominantly the two fire hall ones and the generator.
Correct, the generator at Brennan Park. We believe based on what we know, that that would bring us down to an effective tax rate. So if we include the growth at 0.05% increase on revenue.
And that sort of brings us back to where we were last week.
Correct.
So what are council's thoughts on the 330 being borrowed for instead of using revenue in the taxation generally?
Well, we've got more revenue coming in and we're already spending it.
That's not answering my question.
I feel it's all, sometimes when more revenue comes in, it might be nice to reduce taxes a little bit.
That's what we're trying to do here, that's exactly what we're trying to do.
We're spending money based on the fact that we've got more revenue. We're borrowing money based on our more revenue.
That's certainly not the impetus for this?
No, that's what we're doing. Okay, this is just a comment.
So are you okay with borrowing 330 instead of taxing?
Yeah, and I'm okay on that. I didn't want to lose the discussion about the parking lots. And not necessarily include them in this particular one, but look for perhaps other sources of funds for them. And Mr. Buxton's exactly right. My thinking about that and my, what I took away from the conversation on Tuesday was we wanted to think about replacing some of the parking ride that presently goes on the adventure center. And I don't know exactly what it is, but just one small bus. And that's what we would try to find an alternate location for in the short term. And I'm not sure what the cost of that is, that used to be the old DC rail, there's no loading dock there. It's a relatively level site, it might need grading and some signage and some concrete barriers or something like that. I'm not sure what it would take. But the other thing perhaps is larger is the smokeless parking lot expansion. And so the discussion point, I think, is do we want to go ahead with it?
Yeah, we will get there, I just wanted to check off.
Okay, so we're not talking about this one?
We're not, we're okay to take those three projects and fund them through long-term borrowing?
Well, sorry, I mean, I guess one of the options would be to package that up as well, if we saw fit to do that. So I guess we can just come back on that to this particular one.
Yeah, no, this is just one of those three things for now. I didn't want to have the conversation off on the, on the, on the, on the, on the parking lot at this point.
So I'm good with that.
Jason, Jason.
So we're leaving the discussion of the smokeless parking lot there, or are we discussing?
No, we're still discussing that, I just wanted to make sure council is okay with those three projects, funding them through taxation, borrowing.
Okay.
And they're long, they're, some of them are 70-year projects, right?
Next slide is our capital plan, fast facts.
So just, we want to come back to the smokeless park and we just want to make sure we're.
I have that in the following slide, I got it out for the smokeless, so just, I'm sorry. So these are the fast facts based on what we had come to the table with, and we have some changes now. So essentially, the effect on operations per the listing provided will have decreased from the $1,928,715 to just under 1.6 million, based on the decision to borrow. And then our total borrowing would increase by to 7.5 million, just, just over. Okay, so those are the updates in relation to our fast facts, just a quick update. And then to touch, touch on the changes.
Would be the addition of the 330 onto that number that was there. Council, do you want to go back to that one?
No, I just, the numbers that I was seeing wasn't on that.
Yeah, so I was trying to provide the updated numbers based on the decision to borrow. And I just wanted to highlight some of the changes that have been made to the capital plan since our last budget workshop. So we have removed the library space improvements, or pushed them out. The, so that's a decrease of $25,000. The fire training center was a decrease of $10,000. Reduction of the animal control van was a reduction, well, was a reduction of $10,000. And for the recreation passenger van, we had indicated that we would include the expectation of a donation of $15,000 with the general concept that if we don't receive the donation, we won't move ahead. Our weigh-in, we have decreased the effect on operations by $125,000. There was an increase of $10,000 in relation to the campground, specifically bear-proof caches to store food. We added the trail maintenance machine to a nil effect. We're hoping that it's capital, sorry, my, yes, community works funding. We're still waiting to hear back on the definitive answer, but we're hopeful that the community works funding will work. And if that doesn't, then surplus if necessary. Entrance sign, we, we did some moving around so that we have a project specifically for the entrance sign, but the $20,000 determined for 2017 is being funded from surplus. And Ms. Glende has actually already discussed the, the increase that we had on operations based on the change in DCCs for the dental community park.
Now, the dental community park was $172,000 something, something in the budget? A portion of which is funded to general, general revenue, a portion of which is CACs, a portion of which is something else.
DCCs.
DCCs, yes. It, it seems to me in my mind, quite expensive park, and I'm just not sure, maybe staff could explain how we, how we determined it was a $172,000 park? To understand if we actually, if we can, if we can fund it just through the CAC and the DCC without having to, to, you know, what, can we get a park, you know, it seems like a lot. So just wondering, what, what do we get for 172 and can we make it 142?
Mayor Heitzman, through y'all, I can ask Mr. Buxton to speak to the details of the park and the budget. The park is a DCC, the municipal portion is over 50%. So we can't just use DCCs and the developer contribution. The municipality per the DCC bylaw must contribute our portion of that project.
Why can't that be a CAC?
We, I don't, we, I would have to double check on the DCC bylaw regulations, but it has to be a municipal contribution to a DCC project. We can look and see if the CACs would count for that. One thing that, that staff did discuss was, given that this is the park that we're going to use for the participatory budgeting process and have the community weigh in, is that we could phase the building of the park such that, you know, we could take out all of the municipal contribution, spend the CAC money this year. We would definitely have to have council commit to paying for the DCC and the municipal contribution portion. Otherwise, we'd have to go back and reimburse the CAC, but that's sort of a technical regulation thing. But we could phase it to reduce the revenue or the tax revenue requirement for this year.
So I would like to understand if we can use, if like a CAC, if a developer says, we want to put this money, this is our CAC. Council, it's up to council to decide exactly how, we sort of made the intention that we want to put it into a park in this area. I would like to understand, because my understanding is the CAC is our cash now in theory, why that would not be considered a municipal contribution? Or could be, if we could make sure we can throw that out?
I don't see any reason why it couldn't. It's just a common mechanic. The project has to be funded 54% municipal, 46% DCCs. That's really, I think, it.
So if we have $60,000 in CACs, I can't remember what the number was.
Yes, yes.
Sixty. Then in theory, if that's 54% of the project, the DCC fund would pay for the remainder of the 46% of that.
We can definitely take that away and look, and we can look into it, yeah.
So I think, and then it would be about $110,000 park or something like that. Which could be, you know, that, then we go through participation of the neighborhood to determine what that looks like, you know, citing all that sort of thing, but that's the budget. And then it could be that that's just phase one, and then we somehow down in the future add a larger phase two, but it's the start. Instead of adding on.
Yeah, definitely, Mayor Heitzman, we'll look into the feasibility of that, definitely. And then if that's the case, then that's great, we reduce the tax recognition by $60,000, $7,000.
Whatever that is. If you can get that. Do I say a hand over here?
Mine.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I generally agree with that, I guess, subject to, I mean, we don't have the details of the park plan in front of us, and subject to that $105,000, whatever that number turns out to be, being a logical place to stop a phase. And sometimes it is and sometimes it might not be. So I think there might be just a bit of adjustment, but I generally agree with where you're going with that though, and we can look to another year for phase two. And there may be additional money refunds available, but at that point, it's not a DCC project, we've spent the DCC. And we can just carry on with other sources of funding as we see fit. I guess that's my only concern, is that's a logical place to stop them. And, you know, staff will just have to work around that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so go ahead.
So I have a question about the campground bear, bear proofing caches. I know we decided to put in, we had quite a robust discussion of the bear proofing caches, but we, I don't know if we fully discussed whether we want to run a campground or not, if we're keeping that area completely as a campground, because we have such large capital expenses in the future and hadn't really fully decided. We put the $10,000 in to keep it open another year, really? But is that with the man camp just receiving, the man camp campground right around the corner, receiving their permission, does that affect our decision-making at all with putting $10,000 in temporary?
Maybe, Tanya, can you, I hear where you're coming from, but can we, can you just reflect on what we talked about this time?
Of course, Mayor Heitzman, my, my understanding was that we determined we were going to go with the bear proof caches as the minimum that we could do for 2017. And we were going to come back in 2017 and have a separate discussion about the campground, continue, you know, are we in the business, are we not?
Because we do, we need to really engage all the users groups that have turned them in, so it's quite a big conversation. And I think it was a VCH, but that was more of the way of the.
I guess my question is, are we allowed, we need gray water in there to run it, it's a health concern. And that we needed, I thought we needed permission with Vancouver Coastal Health because of the gray water. So if we can't run it as campground, is, should we push the decision out until we can afford to run it as campground? Because it's a health issue not having the gray water, and they said that we need to fix the gray water and run it as campground.
If I may?
Yeah, please.
Perhaps I could ask Mr. Buxton to speak to the regulations?
It wasn't actually VCH, it was our bylaw and ministry environment guidelines around animal transport. So we, we can continue, in my recollection, council thought that addressing the food management issue through the caches would get us through 2017.
Okay, so it's not a health issue?
It wasn't a health issue?
We're not going to.
And the other thing I recall from that discussion was that these bear caches are movable. So if we do repurpose that space sometime, we can put them somewhere else, and we haven't really lost them.
Yeah, my issue was just remembering from.
Yeah, it was an MOE, a wildlife issue versus.
Gray water, yeah.
Okay. So if any more questions on this, we're going to take that 33 off the dental community department's name.
I'll ask Ms. Glende to speak to that, if she may.
I would say yes.
Okay, yes.
We're still doing the project, it's just reduced by that amount or whatever amount we can reduce it.
I, I went to check with Linda Clausen, our other financial manager. Oh, my God. I was laughing, what did you call you? No one tells me anything around here.
Welcome to my world.
So the question about CACs.
Okay, we have to make sure we're in the zone here. Okay, we'll check. I, I can't see why it wouldn't, I mean, it's our contribution.
Yeah, and so if that's the case, then we can reduce, do you want us to reduce the whole amount to 67, which is the tax revenue?
I think, yeah, I think, yeah, reduce it, whatever amount. Exactly, essentially, yes. But it may reduce exponentially the actual project, because ours is 54% and the DCCs is. So 60 is 54%, whatever the amount, someone else did the math. But it might actually not simply reduce the project by 33,000, it might actually reduce the project a little bit more.
Yes.
That's the net effect, because we won't be able to access as much DCC monies to do it, because we're only putting in 60. Is everyone clear with that?
So does line it into the budget, is $67,000 that we are taxable? So nobody keeps asking for compensation that we want to pull that all out? I know there was a number about 33,000.
I can clarify that there.
Which, which line did I go in?
We're on 63. So 60,000 is the CAC, 45 and a half is the DCC, and then there was another 67,000 coming from revenue. And I think we want to pull out the entire 67,000 based on that 54, 46 calculation.
Where does that 33 number come up there?
Mayor Heitzman, I can clarify, sorry.
We're not rehearsed lately.
Yeah, maybe I should acquiesce to my expert. Go ahead.
So just to clarify, that 33,000, originally for that particular project, the operating, the effect on revenues, the taxation was $33,000 less, because there was an expectation of a certain DCC that would assist with the funding. But that particular DCC was not included in the bylaw, so we had to decrease the DCC funding and increase the operating. But I believe if we will look into the specifics as to whether we can use a CAC as a municipal contribution, and if we were able to do that, then the full 67,000 would be removed. And further to Mayor Heitzman's discussion point, the actual project would likely move from 172, 172.5 probably to maybe round about 110-ish. So for the full project.
Oh, I get it now.
Yeah, the full project cost, I should say, sorry.
Yes. And I think what council is saying, we're funding this with the CAC, which is our contribution, municipal contribution and the DCC amount, and not from an additional revenue.
So I guess it raises the question that if we do phase it, and we had a phasing plan, where's phase one is called 110,000, and the DCCs is the 46, and our contribution with the CACs is 54, can we not also apply DCCs to phase two if we do it, say, a year later, and have 46% of the cost of phase two come from the DCC bylaw as well? And I don't expect you to answer that at this moment, but I think that's out there for us to think about. And I don't expect you to answer that at this moment, but I think that's out there for us to think about.
Yeah, I know you're asking.
Yeah, yes, you're correct. Okay, everyone cool with that? So we're taking 66, we're taking all the cost of that park from revenue out?
We are, yes.
Yeah, the answer, Jess.
The answer I was looking for, so that's good. Okay, we're going to move on.
Before we move on from the capital plan, one of the items that council had expressed interest in was the Arts Council wall removal. So we, we have had a discussion with Camilla, she hasn't been able to get into the details. However, she thought that if the wall was not structural, then it would be maximum $5,000 to remove. However, if it is structural, which we don't know yet, then it will not happen.
And I see the chair of the Arts Council in the room, so Sydney, if you want to comment or anything, put your hand up, and we'll invite you up there. You okay with that? Didn't mean to put you on the spot, sorry. Okay, everyone's clear with that, so we're going to take the 10,000 out for the Arts Council wall issue.
If I may, Mayor Heitzman, this was a discussion point, so there hadn't been anything placed in the budget. We just wanted to provide additional details.
So if it was non-structural, it'd be $5,000 to take it out. If it was structural, it's 10,000, or do we know it costs, or don't?
Oh, Mayor Heitzman, if it is structural, it can't come out.
Well, I mean, there's other, there's ways of taking out a structural wall, but maintaining its structure, it just costs a lot of money.
Yeah, it would be much more than that. That was Camilla's answer, was, she wouldn't recommend taking it out if it was structural.
That's what I'm hearing, yeah. Do you want to come up, Sydney? Come up. Sit somewhere close. Yeah, come over here, come to the table, I'm so far away. You serve your... Go ahead. Welcome, Sydney, do you want to maybe introduce yourself to make sure everyone? TV land knows who you are.
I'm Sunday, Chair, Chair, the School of Sharps Council. And just to touch on the topic, which was brought up in the December Annual Meeting, with the School of Sharps Council building as a potential capital project. Camilla and I still have yet to touch base, however, do intend to touch base, to look at the possibility of taking out that left-sided wall. If that wall is deemed not a feasible project for the future, there are other suggestions for capital improvements to that building, including letting it be spirited, it could be another really great ingredient, that not only benefits the building, but also publicly affects the surrounding character. So those details have still yet to come forth, once I connect with Camilla, hopefully in the very near future.
So is it worth keeping a bit of a placeholder in there for that purpose? It's not, we're not talking 10,000, maybe up to 5,000, maybe less, so. Okay, well, we'll leave it in there for now, and then we can... Moving on?
If I may, Mayor Heitzman, we could come back to the smoke bluffs.
Great.
While we're in our capital discussion, our capital plan discussion.
I have a question, I thought you carried the task.
So, and we need Gary for the smoke bluffs too, don't we? Yeah, why don't we hold off on that, two seconds?
Or I can, I can get Matt Simmons to come in.
Well, is Gary coming back? Okay, so why don't we just put it on hold until Gary's back, he'll be back in a few minutes. Why don't we move on very quickly over to that, Gary's here. Do you want to pray, if you mind sharing for a little?
Okay, you're going to take a five-minute break? Okay, Gary, there's a question coming at you.
Go ahead.
Oh, Pete, sorry. I have one, but if you want to touch on the smoke bluffs first, let's go there first. That was the most recent topic.
Okay, so through acting mayor prior, we have been speaking to Matt Simmons, the Capital Projects Manager, since the last budget meeting when this was discussed, or the last council meeting when this was discussed, he's learned that there is a developer that he can acquire rock from for free, because his developer needs to remove it from the development site, reducing the original budget of 140,000 to 110,000. And then perhaps Mr. Buxton can speak to it more, we can have Matt come in. But similar to the Denfield, we thought we could reduce the scope of the project and phase it over 2017, 2018. And Matt's confident he can get a lot of work done for less than a long time this year.
Well, I'm good with that, I wasn't asking a question, it's Pete. Well, let's finish this topic, because mine doesn't contend. Okay, is there anybody else who you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so expecting the smoke bluff wasn't supposed to happen till next year, according to the Smoke Bluff Committee. And including it in the budget this year prematurely, because we're reducing capacity elsewhere, is tough for the taxpayers. And I'm wondering about resurfacing, the cost of resurfacing and enlarging, or if we could just enlarge one, enlarge this year without doing gravel, just enlarge it and make it an organic parking lot without a surface, and then flip surfacing into another year.
There is no surfacing there, so it'll be gravel.
Okay, so can we enlarge it without grumbling it?
I think that was Matt's, this, we can do less this year, we may involve clearing partially and filling, or just clearing this year and prepping to fill next year. And we can certainly phase it. And it's not going to, given that we've got the material, it's certainly not going to cost as much as it appears.
Still 120,000?
The total park, if I may, is, at this point, we get the extra, the rock for free is 110, for it to be expanded and complete.
Rock for free, that's good. Pete, are you ready now?
Sure. It's on a different topic, of course, for the works. Just a question for Gary, really, you're looking at line 22, the annual road reconstruction, and for 17, you've got 800,000 down, and I'm just looking at, and I've had a lot of comments, I've been driving around seeing the condition of the roads from this heavy winter we've had, and the salting and stuff, and I'm just wondering if that's a sufficient amount to pull off what appears to be...
We spent that amount already.
No, and no, 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 it's not. We know that the, it's 1.2 million to do, to keep our roads in tick-tock condition. As we get below that 1.2, it becomes, stuff just will have to last a little longer. We suspect that we will have to put some of the 800,000 into short-term patches, of course, the housing increases where and there. But no, 800 is not, we've had that discussion around council tables before. But that's the number that we set on, just means that some of our stuff will reach a lower standard of process, but right back up to popcorn.
And next year it's up to 90.
Yes, certainly.
I don't know, is, are you going to send him one?
Yes, yeah, I just, I just wanted to go back to the gravel and wonder, how much gravel is there?
In under, enough, some grades part. Actually, from what I've seen, there may be more that we will stop after other projects. Yeah, we're looking at gravel.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Diet work.
Mayor Heitzman, Robert has just gone to get Matt Simmons. He can answer the question around how much can get done this year, in terms of how big we can make it, and what we can do with the free rock, and what additional money he would need. So he can come back and speak to that, and says back in... Because we would need a decision from council on, we would still need money in order to get the rock there, et cetera. So we would need a decision.
Susan, can I then, Karen?
I'll wait for that, I just wanted to not drop the conversation on the smoke bluffs, because that's a huge budget implication for this year. The other question, can I just ask the other question? So it's on the CN rail crossing safety improvements. And so CN has no skin in the game when it comes to funding those railway crossing improvements. They basically, we, the district has to fund all the CN rail improvements in order to make, is this for the horns? So that the horns don't, or is that for...
No, through the, through the chair, Matt Simmons is going to correct me if I'm wrong here. No, CN's got a quite a bit of skin in the game on those crossing improvements, or Transport Canada does too.
Yeah, so it starts with the Transport Canada, the Great Crossing Improvement Program, which has come up with all these new standards that require all of these crossings in Canada, roughly 2,200 of them to meet these regulations. And so this year, we did the assessments, which we did 21 crossings, we went through and did those assessments. And then for us to move forward, we have to keep kind of pushing. And subsequent to the crossing assessments that we've done, we met with CN, there's six crossings that are the priority between the assessments and their operation. And that's to push those, to continue to push those all ahead. And we've got to be compliant with that by 2021, with all 21 crossings in Spanish.
But substantial amount of funding is not coming from the DCC?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a number of different funding mechanisms that are available. We recently applied for a grant to push these things ahead, even with our funds this year, which was an 80/20, the 80 was coming from Transport Canada. The other funding accounts could be 50% Transport Canada, 37.5% CN, and 12.5% for the district. So depending on what projects and what things are accounted for there, there's a difference, but largely there.
So just on that budget, so we budget a certain amount, and if it gets extended to more funding, we can do more crossings, and we just will become compliant to all these crossings?
Absolutely. So what we're trying to do this year is leverage the district portion to get as much as we can get done in slides, whatever portion of that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I just, I heard two different things today about the smoke bluff park being in the budget. You said it was in the budget for this year.
It was in the capital plan last year for this year.
And then Counselor Chappelle said that the Smoke Bluff Park Committee didn't want it done until 2018. So now I'm confused. I think the smoke bluff's already like it done three years ago, but, I mean, in theory. Through you, I think Counselor Chappelle just said it wasn't in the plan this year. So maybe I could get some clarity? I thought it was priority.
Yeah. Okay, maybe clarify what you're saying.
So the smoke bluff, we did push it forward, we had to do the culverts and the entranceway. From what I understood, the culverts and the entranceway done, and then there was going to be prepping stuff working, and it was going to be budgeted for next year.
And my, and my understanding was, so we, we did that this year, and that the next phase was supposed to be in this year's budget to actually do it. And that's what was in last year's capital plan. Was last year, 2016, we did the culvert improvements. 2017, in last year's budget capital plan, was to do the park improvement. It didn't get presented back to council because of a capacity issue, is what I've been told. I think we were told last Tuesday. So now we've taken a fairly big potential project off of the workload of staff and period. The funding came out of the water fund for the ICP project, but there's the capacity to do the project in town back, to avail, to, you know, the ability of council. I think where it got confusing is that it used to be in the DCC, the C bylaw didn't. Make it into the final draft, the DCC bylaw, so we can't fund it through DCCs, we have to fund it through another funding source. Correct, did I get that correct? Okay, so maybe, so Matt, can you clarify exactly with regard to the gravel, what we can do?
Well, there's a potential source of some rock in town right now that could reduce the capital costs of doing that project. And so that's, that's one component. You know, it's about 21, it's about 2,000 square meters of added parking space in there. So the idea is that it's going to take a significant amount of gravel to build that up. And the fact that it's, we're not building that to a standard of the road structure, it's just, you know, we're not putting in catch basins and paving it, that we could leverage that to reduce those capital costs. But we need to get, we need to work with the person that has that rock to kind of utilize it in the next while in order to take advantage of that. So that's part of what that discussion is. But as far as what you would need to do there to extend the parking lot, you know, the idea is you'd put in probably a meter of material, and then the surface of the gravel, and do a bit of onsite kind of management of how the surface drainage works, but it would be consistent with what's there.
So if we got some of this, got this gravel, and we did what you said, what would be the budget for the smoke bluff park in town?
Last week, when, when there started to be some discussion with this, I kind of worked my way through, you know, 2,000 square meters, a meter of materials, 2,000 cubic meters, and here's a cost for that. If we could get that material delivered to the site at no cost, we still need to process it. So, you know, I think we'd identified 125,000 or 120,000 initially, and that would probably reduce the cost by about 30,000, 30,000 to 40,000.
What was in last, what was in the financial plan last year?
Mayor Heitzman, for 2016, it was $125,000 for the culvert replacement, which was completed. There was nothing indicated in the financial plan for the parking lot. It has been discussed year over year, but it doesn't...
So we haven't really put our, we haven't dialed it down to exactly, you know, so, but we're, we expect it to be, based on your crude, lovely math, I don't mean crude in a bad sense, but about 125, 130, 40s, in that range, minus 30, if we can...
And the other question that came up just before you came in the room, was whether there's any sort of logic to trying to phase it. Is that conceivable, and so at what point, I mean, could you do half this year, half next year, without becoming too inefficient, for example?
Yeah, I think through you, Mayor Heitzman, we absolutely could. We can work with whatever we have for a resource to stand apart in that area. And there's obviously efficiencies to be gained when you can scale this stuff up. But, you know, to split that into two phases, I mean, you know, I don't think there'd be a lot lost on that. I mean, it would be better to go in there in one shot and be done with it. Certainly utilizing available rock in town, that's, that's not something that can be phased. That's typically, whatever we would take advantage of in the near future, we would, we could add in that lost opportunity to a subsequent phase, it'd have to likely be purchased, or another, you know, location identified. But it's, it's not unreasonable to try to phase it.
It seems like a good idea to take advantage of the opportunity for the gravel syndrome at the night, or...
No, that's exactly what I was going to say, is if we have the free gravel, it would seem pretty good to utilize the free resources, because then you're really just, Smoke Bluff Committee, what you're talking about, different phasing of just like doing the clearing one year and then unpacking. But if we have free gravel, I can't see why.
So if we were to put 100,000, let's say, hoping we get the 30 gravel in the budget, what are our options to fund it? Is that your question, Councilwoman, or do you want to add on to that?
Well, it was, but I was wondering if staff could tell me about surplus. What does that mean?
Surplus?
Surplus. Funded a couple of other things earlier in the conversation.
So how do we fund $100,000 in the parking lot?
Mayor Heitzman, one thing staff did talk about was that if we did remove the 67,000 out of the Denfield Park, we could put that towards the Smoke Bluff parking lot. That still leaves us at the estimated 5.05 effective increase on revenue. So that's 65-ish, and then we need to find another 35 somewhere.
I wanted to ask the question, why then, why the province said no to that being a DCC project, but that's another conversation, sorry.
Yeah.
Centralist Road by plane, it's beautiful.
Well, let's, okay, can you hold, oh, okay, sorry.
I'm just thinking of, that's another $26,000, it's still in the transportation budget.
Can you say what, why?
Uh, yeah, sorry, 30.
It's funded, it's not funded for revenue, no?
It's capital fund, sorry.
The wicks of the dark are from the...
Branches and other...
Right, oh, that's from, that's the by plane, the Sloughing Project, right?
Okay. We have an interview with Councilwoman.
Oh, sorry, sorry. We all got a chat.
Yeah, go ahead, Karen.
It's from Mayor Heitzman. In relation to the surplus and use of the surplus, that's actually something that I am still learning about in my position. And with Christine not here at the moment, I wouldn't feel particularly comfortable giving a definitive answer. It's something that I would like to look into. I understand the concept of the surplus, but in relation to the use of the surplus, and to what extent we use the surplus... and to what extent we use the surplus to fund current year projects outside of carryforwards where we've already previously taxed, that's a moving target that I'm trying to hone in on.
Do we know how much is in surplus? This is surplus from last year, just the last, you're not going back far enough?
I would have to look into that.
So do you think we could put a bit of a placeholder in here to fund it through revenue, but basically use the 66 that we've taken off that one project on this one? And likely including another 33-ish to make it 100 plus hopefully 30,000 gravel from other sources. And I don't know how you put that budget at 130, but you have 30 funded through this. And if we don't get that 30, we'd have to figure out what we get through what we have.
Okay.
And if I could just add that, it would be nice if we could early release that if it's going to be possible, just to take advantage of the time here. That's possible.
I would suggest, that's a good suggestion.
And it's kind of buying our money, and I'm thinking the entrance sign still is, did we take out the entrance sign money?
Oh, my God.
Is that the 20?
No, there's a little bit in there.
Yeah, there's still 20 grand in the entrance sign, and we don't really have an entrance sign project?
The entrance sign is in the budget.
20, 30.
Matt, Mayor Heinzman, the entrance sign has gone back into the budget. So that money will be used for that.
It's currently in the budget.
Yep.
20 grand?
No, it's.
It's more than 20 grand.
Line 47.
We can certainly talk about taking it out again.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the community wayfinding project has the entrance sign in it, and then the other, then line 47, because 20 grand is enough to actually fund anything.
There's 30 from revenue. It didn't make over this line though. So there's 30 in that, yeah, go ahead.
If I may, Mayor Heinzman, I actually sat down with Mr. Buxton, and we clarified some of the accounting in relation to the wayfinding and the entrance sign. So the wayfinding is now inclusive of, the wayfinding does not include the entrance sign, and we've clarified this, and the entrance sign is a separate project now. So that's 20,000 funded from surplus in 2017, plus 30,000 funded by revenue in 2018. So 50,000 in total for an entrance sign.
Plus the 16 from insurance, right?
Yes, actually, and that's something that I have to include. It's about 12, I just looked, I found out it's 12,000 that was in deferred revenue. So that's, really, it's only 8,000 that would be coming from surplus.
So we're taking surplus from this year and adding it to revenue from next year to get to 50 plus the 16. I'm wondering why we're doing that?
I'm sorry, what number is this thing?
It's line 47, and it says in 2017 budget, we're using 20,000 from surplus.
Yep.
And then 30,000 in next year's budget, which is the revenue, plus the 16 from the insurance that's in the bank somewhere.
The 12,000 in deferred revenue will actually be a reduction to the 20,000 in accumulated surplus. It's just, I printed this and couldn't find the deferred revenue until a later.
Okay, so it's 50,000 is not an additional?
No, not an additional.
That's in the program?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I can try and. You know, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
So to the mayor, I'm just wondering, you know, I really, to have a hit more on taxes to increase parking in that area, I really would like to reduce somewhere else to increase the budget and have a least early, so that we can not increase the taxes past 5%.
Yes. Yes. That, Counselor Elliott?
So I agree, I'd be okay doing one of two things. We could just save the entrance sign for next year, because we've got other signs coming on the highway that are directing people into downtown.
We're not taxing for it this year.
Oh, true. The other thing would be to take 15,000 from the paving budget. Technically, we're kind of paving something, and 15,000 from active transportation to make up the difference. Which are small amounts off those two budgets, but it's a way to do it, because those are both being funded through taxation.
Yeah, then.
Isn't the paving already kind of figured out? We're paving with our steps?
Not to that fine grain, I don't think.
True, Mayor Heinzman, I think that the pavement management plan identifies kind of the order to which to pave, but that's a function of, you know, not defined by year, but just by priority.
No, I kind of like that. Counselor, okay with that, or?
I keep being attracted to this word surplus, because it seems to solve problems in other areas, so I wouldn't want to just throw that out. It may be a source of funding that we could utilize without going after some of these other things. But absent that, I mean, something like that in my pan, oh, absolutely don't want to increase the tax intake this year. I think we're all agreeing on that.
Try to reduce it, yes.
And maybe go to something else like Counselor might suggest.
So we'd like to get me an answer on the surplus question before definitively, but at the moment, the moment, I think we're, I think what I mean, Counselor, I'll quote Counselor Stone second, is 130,000 for this project, 30,000 of which will be funded through gravel. We put it called gravel call, the gravel grant. And 66 is sort of taking that from the one part over to that, and then we'd like to figure out a way of topping that up to, you know.
And then with that Cleveland, Victoria, the main street state upgrades?
You could do 23.
Yeah, thank you. 450, would it be possible to take a little bit from there as well? Matt, is that our?
There's no revenue, that's new borrow. Yeah, there's no, it's not taxation. I'll look at this one second. Need my ruler. So is that enough guidance on this one, or not?
It is, I do, Mayor Heinzman, have one more opportunity here if we can, if counsel is okay with early release. And I will speak to it, but I'll have Mr. Sims jump in if I get it wrong. Self-contained breathing apparatus purchase, which is number 10, has been budgeted at 330. There is an opportunity for economies of scale, North Vancouver Fire Department is also purchasing these apparatus. Should we have the opportunity to join them? There's potential savings for us around 5, 50,000?
I love, 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 love the fact that this is how you're thinking. I think that's fantastic.
I can't take credit for it. Chief Stoner and Mr. Sims.
I love, 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 love that suggestion. I think we should be doing this much more as municipalities. We have a lot of purchasing power together, a lot of, I think that's great thinking. Thank you, that's great.
So we do need early release. Jeff, looks like he needs to say something.
Sure. So currently, it's a sole source bid by the North Shore Muse Palbe, so the three fire departments there. And we have a opportunity to take, to jump on board with that. We're, there's two remaining vendors or manufacturers of these apparatus. So Chief Stoner is seeking a quote from the other vendor, just to ensure we're in line. But given the benefit to the quote, it'll be interesting to see. Regardless, he's confident that there's a savings of 15,000. So the one aspect with this, though, is it is short-term borrowing, so I'm not sure if it will completely solve the problem that was being partially discussed, Mayor Heinzman? But it still is an overall savings to the budget.
No, I just love the philosophy, I think we should bring it much more, I love it. So yes, not sure how that affects this decision. Good job.
Well, in order to take advantage of the opportunity and commit to Northman, we would need early release of the funds to commit to spending them.
Someone?
By Counselor, you said by Counselor Elliott. Everyone understand what we're voting on? All those in favor, opposed, motion carries?
Mayor Heinzman, now that you've passed a motion on that, if you do want early release of funds for the Smokebless parking lot, we need a motion to that extent as well.
Yeah, and I think we're still not quite 100% sure how we get out to that, but perhaps the motion is simply that the Smokebless Park project be put in this year's budget. And I think what I'm hearing is we fund it up to 100, hopefully get 30 of it funded through this opportunity. We have 66 of it from reallocation. We're trying to figure out how to get to 100. So I don't know how you word that in this, or it could be surplus, it could be taking a little bit out of here and a little bit out of these really big budgets, like the paving and the active transportation, pieces of those. So that's the motion. Go ahead.
Terry?
Just while I was wondering about what the timing for early release is. I mean, is it today? And if we didn't do it today, pending these other questions being answered, when might we do it?
Tomorrow?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, cheeky girl. That was helpful.
Well, how early does early release have to be? I mean, it could be starting work next week, or is it something that will start in February anyway? I mean, I like the idea of early release, but I'm having trouble with a motion too, and we haven't quite identified the sources of funding yet, so we'll just step away from that.
Well, I think the early release part of the Smokebless, I think, is one decision, and it might be, Mr. Simmons has left the room, but it might be that you're really taking advantage of, we need to act on it today, or tomorrow. But if that's not the case, then we can deliberate on that, because we have sort of a final number in front of us.
Mayor Heinzman, for early release in this instance, this is just to commit the whole, so it wouldn't be before February 7th, and we would be able to bring back answers to the surplus question or alternative funding expiration. By that time, we ratified the motion.
And is that early enough for you to give an okay to the North Shore Fire Department?
I've been checking with Chief Stoner, and I guess I'll have to get the final determination. I think he would work with whatever, but the initial information I had from him on Friday was within two weeks, so it'll be tight.
If you think we have, if, I mean, we can, all of us are here, we can vote to have a special meeting just to consider that one item, so you can act on it right away, and that's an option for us. I don't suggest we do that in Smokebless, because I think we have a little more information, and maybe not the imperative for the timing as much. But if you think it matters, then we should just simply have a two-minute special at the end of the day today. Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Heinzman, I, you know, I can reach out to Chief Stoner now to determine that, but just heard Robin say that next week we'll probably do the same thing to ratify that.
It's actually two weeks, because we, it's February 7th, it's two weeks from now, the next actual regular council meeting.
I'll go for it right now.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
So I'm a little bit ethically opposed to removing funds from an active transportation fund in order to fund a parking lot, which is car transportation. It's not funding anything that's reducing car transportation, it's actually increasing car transportation infrastructure. So either the money should also come from the paving budget, and, you know, we've been underfunding active transportation, and that's what ends up happening, is we keep on eating away and being like, oh, you know, but sidewalks are expensive, and our community expects a lot in this, and we don't have enough money for it. So I don't want to just start taking little bits out, because we don't have projects. I think we're going to have projects that are going to be underfunded for, so.
That's definitely the case. And I don't think we're committing to it, I think.
No, I agree. I just wanted to make that point, and to pick away in our active transportation.
I think we'd like to take it from surplus.
I think I'd like to take it from surplus as well, this magic surplus budget.
Counselor, right.
Yeah, well, just to Susan's point there, underfunding, and I heard Matt say some numbers, but we're spending 800,000 on Black Dog with paving every year. I think we're 400,000 short, but we shouldn't. So we double underfunding active transportation. We're going in two-thirds on paving for the last three years. Matt's just going to come back and bite us.
Are you reading that as well?
Sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, Counselor Heinzman? Really what I'm hearing is, in relation to the Smokebless, we've got partial coverage in due to the reduction for Denville, and we really would just like to fund that remaining approximately 30,000, with the assumption that our gravel or the rocks are free from surplus. So I think what I can do is move ahead with that understanding, and if there is an issue, I can bring that back. And I'll touch base with Christine as soon as I'm able.
Okay, great, thanks.
30,000 in the flooring budget for the operations flooring, is that something that you waited here?
We had that last week, and my understanding is pretty bad, like it's a bit of a safety issue.
In the operations office.
So we'll get that fine tuning back.
You still have a motion.
Which one's that? Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll call the question on the breathing apparatus. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries? Yes.
Just to clarify where staff was going with that last comment about the Smokebless. So the other 30 or 35,000, the number is, you're going to come back with, or are you attempting to look at surplus? Is that?
Yes, I'm attempting to look at surplus. My understanding is that that is where, that is counsel's direction, and so I'm going to.
Not reading some other line either?
Exactly.
Okay. And you, I think you have some clarity on the Smokebless, we're good with them?
Yes, yes. Okay. So moving on, we will be looking at our service level changes. So that is section seven of our binders, and we will be starting with page 72. Our service level fast facts, the net impact on their tax requisition is currently 620,137. Page 72. And as mentioned previously, we have our capital reserve 1% increase below the line. And next, I would just like to highlight some of the changes that we have had since our previous budget workshop. Okay? So first off, we have, in relation to the bylaw enforcement officer, a decrease of And I'll note that the FTE is indicating .45. Now, that, I'll clarify, is it's been prorated for 2017, with the expectation of a start in April. Okay, so full FTE is .6. We've removed the storm system maintenance, delayed the invasive species, delayed the dangerous trees. We've had an increase of just under 8.9,000 in relation to the names of active transportation, but this is the labor in relation to the trails.
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk machine, yeah, sorry. The trails and sidewalk maintenance machine. And per counsel direction, for 2017, we have prorated, so we're at .1 FTE. And the understanding is that the proration for 2018 is to full .3, but we will, we will be revisiting this item. Also, an increase is our CMP chair replacement. So we removed the special project, which we'll touch on later, of 10,000, with the expectation that we've put 2,500 in the budget to replace chairs and other furniture as needed on an annual basis. For the facilities admin support, that is a decrease of 9.35,000. And again, this has been prorated. And again, this has been prorated. So the expectation was start in April. So .43 FTE, the total FTE is .57. And lastly, the increase for community grants of just over $12,000.
And that, what's that changed since July? What's the community grant changed since July?
So the community grants is essentially taking the difference from prior year, basically the grants and aid.
Okay, so the last stuff we had, didn't take into consideration all the decisions we made?
Yes, yeah, so we had to increase grants. Yes, so this is taking that into account.
What's on hand with the council?
I just, I can't find the invasive species line.
We've delayed that into 2018.
Can you tell us a line item?
There's not a line item. I've just concentrated on the 2017 for this particular presentation.
For how much was that?
$10,000.
$10,000. So that, those are the reductions to 2017.
So we're not funding invasive species at all? Like, the C D S I invasive species council went up on anything?
I believe it's $25,000. There's money already in the budget, just with an increase. An increase is the one to impact existing progress.
We know that the invasive species, as we consider, are growing by $200,000 a year. And I thought a few years ago, we started funneling in 100-plus a year. And I hear that we're at $25,000 a year. And that's nothing.
That was part of the discussion last week when you were here, was, is that it's really a million-dollar problem.
It's a million and six right now. Going by $200,000 a year on district property, I'm sorry.
No, I agree. And I think the, if I paraphrase what was discussed, it's not necessarily my opinion, is that because it's literally a drop in the bucket, a portion of a drop in the bucket, still just a smaller drop. And it's not moving the dial at all. So, you know, it's worth debating. I mean, we don't have to cut it. Did I see another hand?
No.
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, good. Those are the changes that we've made. And I also wanted to take a moment. While we're on our service level changes, there was council interest in further details in relation to the bylaw complaints. So if I could give the floor to Mr. Sim to provide some additional information.
Mayor Heinzman, perhaps if you and council are okay, I can report back on my discussion with Chief Stoner about the early release. And he did advise that there's a sense of urgency with this because it's a hold of 2016 pricing. The individuals he was speaking to didn't give a specific date, but said, you know, within two weeks you can get on board. So that two weeks was last week. I wouldn't want to have council lose this opportunity or ask the staff to lose this opportunity. So if it's a possibility for the additional special meeting today, that works for council, then that would be my recommendation.
And just, Robin, maybe just clarify what the parameters of a special meeting include?
All seven council members have to be in attendance to wave notice.
And have to be unanimous?
Yes, and it has to be unanimous. Wave notice.
Or no, be, be before we consider that. You can vote against it, obviously, but.
Oh, yeah, no, the debate still happens. It's the unanimous to be special. To wave notice.
So that's that part. I understand from the meeting last week that council had wanted some additional information as far as metrics for the bylaw department and the bylaw officers. So, you know, I've spoken with Rick and asked him to detail additional information. And because I know that in the business case, it talks about a percentage increase of activity of the bylaw officers of over 60%. So what that translates to is a total number of files or investigations or complaints, both proactive and citizen complaints, of 1,112 in 2016 versus 669 in 2015. Of those, 1,100 roughly for 2016, 540 were parking-related files. And, you know, it doesn't have a time for every parking complaint. But in the current process, well, we haven't moved to the bylaw notification. The bylaw is in place for us to do the bylaw notices. They haven't begun issuing bylaw notices. So to actually issue a ticket, it needs to be personal service. But a typical parking complaint investigation, other than just driving by and seeing somebody parked illegally on the street, where it's complaint-driven, somebody phones in, they have to contact the person back, et cetera, averages about 90 minutes to conclusion. So you've gotten the complaint all the way through doing the investigation and reporting it in. And so if you extract that or do the math, that's about 810 hours. So a bylaw officer that's working full-time is 2,080 hours. So it's not quite half of one of those officers that is spending just on parking. So about half of the files. Many of the other investigations, of course, take much more time. And in the information that was provided as appendixes to the business case, you know, we talked about the work that the bylaw officers are doing that, you know, many people probably won't typically think of as bylaw officer work, but the involvement in a variety of social issues. And, you know, whether it's the homelessness, illegal camping, which all come from, are generated from bylaw complaints. And, you know, on slightly premises. So for example, we have one underway now that began in 2014. And we're still going through the court process. Now, that's on the extreme end, certainly. And in the information, we talked about the priorities, you know, through the season for our bylaw officers. And, you know, note that certainly summer, spring, and fall, wildlife attractiveness is a big priority. And I know that Vanessa was here a few weeks back or late in the year to talk about activities moving forward next year, which will be increased by law officer time and activity. So hopefully, some of those numbers will answer some of the questions. And I understand that there was also some questions about the bylaw notification and adjudication process. So the first resolution to council was in 2006 to commence with implementation. But there wasn't any conclusion until in 2015, when council passed the bylaw for the adjudication and the bylaw notice process. So just to reiterate, the benefits of that is it eliminates that requirement for personal service. So the bylaw officers and animal control officers and our other staff that enforce our, you know, the 23 regulatory bylaws are able to provide bylaw notice. It also provides that dedicated forum for citizens to resolve their complaints without having to go to court, promotes a more timely resolution. And anecdotally, what we've heard is it does increase compliance, not so much compliance with the bylaws, but compliance with the collection of the fines. So it may assist that voluntary collection. And the bylaw adjudication clerk supports all of those aspects as well as supports the bylaw officers from an administrative perspective. So rather than them spending, again, you know, 30 to 50% of their time doing administrative work, such as entering the tickets and, you know, logging different information, this frees them up to do more work, which might impact and support the parking strategy. It provides general administrative support with a secondary role as the screening officer, so to review if the ticket was written correctly or a correct interpretation of the bylaw. So that's some information. No? Prompted some further questions or clarification? One of the aspects, just really quickly, is that we had initially requested a full-time equivalent. Looking at the scheduling and resourcing, moving to a .6 will at least allow us to have that resource available on the weekends and to schedule it there. While adjusting the current employees to some degree, but adjusting one of them continually onto the weekends without an increase here will obviously reduce the amount of service that's available through the rest of the week for our bylaw officers.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's any way of streamlining any of that? Because I think my parking ticket was $110. And I just went into the store and came out and I had a $110 ticket. So that takes, the processing of that takes an hour? And then the second question is, with these tickets, the ticket fine should cover the cost of the labor?
The third question is just council clerk's case.
Mayor Heinzman, can't answer the third question? The, well, we have allocated into the budget. I think initially it was under the bylaw adjudication clerk for $10,000 for collection. So revenue in to assist with that. It's hard to put an exact estimate on the numbers that we will receive. And we're working internally to better refine our collection process for all of the fines under our regulatory bylaws, whether it's the bylaw officers or animal control officers or the building inspector that issued the ticket. Difficult for me to answer exactly the streamlining without the understanding all of the aspects with that. And, but, you know, no, not every parking investigation will take 90 minutes. But, you know, when I was talking with Rick about the downtown court for doing some increased parking enforcement there, with the hourly limit, the amount of time it takes for the bylaw officers to, you know, mark the vehicles and walk and then have to give that timeframe, like, it takes up a significant amount of time. But certainly, you know, just receiving the call or on voicemail that there's a parking complaint, not dealing with proactive ones where you drive by and see somebody, then looking up that information, traveling to the scene, identifying that, yes, there's a violation, writing the ticket, then coming back. But it might not be 90 minutes all taken up at one time. But when you extrapolate all of it, it's, you know, certainly at the very least, an investigation like that is half an hour by the time they do all the administrative work of having to enter the ticket in and so forth. So this is where the bylaw adjudication clerk will be important because they'll be taking on some of that administrative role.
Can I just add one thing? I heard Council Prior say that the costs of the fine should offset the costs of the person, the employees. And right now, under, you know, our council's direction, we do, it's, we seek voluntary compliance first and foremost before we issue a ticket. So parking is a little bit different. So that's why, I guess, it's been highlighted here because it's usually an immediate fine. But some of the other bylaws that we have with barking dogs and noise complaints and all the other multitude of regulatory bylaws that we have, we seek voluntary compliance first. So typically, a neighbor will complain about another neighbor. And you go out and you talk to them, educate them on the bylaw. Maybe they're watering and squirting outside of ours. Talk to the person, then get compliance. So they play a big educational role as far as our regulatory bylaw school as well. So it's not just about finding. And I lost my turn of thought.
Volunteer.
Oh, and the other thing that they do is they support the bylaw officers because they are trained and they've gone to the Justice Institute and taken several levels of evidentiary procedure gathering for court. What they do is they play a role with some of our other staff, the bylaw, the building inspectors, the fire inspectors, and the environmental coordinator related to the site alteration bylaw. And they go out and they attend and they help them with the gathering of evidence on violations. And so, as council's aware, we've had more instances of infraction with the site alteration bylaw. They assist with that. It does take up a piece of their time.
It's five o'clock. Council, what are your obligations, time obligations at the end of the day here? If you'd like to, you're okay now? Okay, okay. Giddy up, we can keep going. Council, raise.
Thank you. I just wanted to check in with staff to see where we were with the budget. Because I noticed the top line shows a reduction of $21,577, which is .45 FTE. And so does that lead in the .6 that Mr. Sim was just talking about?
Yes, so what I, that .45 FTE is proration of the .6. So with the expectation that there will be some time to find the appropriate individual and expectation of hiring in April.
Proration of .6. So if we went with that, then we're getting, we're adding .6 of an FTE to the budget
In total.
For part of 2017.
Exactly, exactly.
The balance of the air miles.
Yeah, exactly.
But just by the government practice. Are we handwriting or do we have handheld devices?
Mayor Heinzman, we're handwriting the parking tickets. We have new bylaw notices ready to go that will still be.
It's actually a quill with a little need for it.
No, but Council Prior was asking about process improvement. And if you gotta handwrite everything and then it has to be entered into a machine, it's not very efficient. But if you had a, you know, if there's an investment we need to make to actually make this much more efficient in the future by having a handheld device that puts it into a system, like, that's.
That's a capacity building.
That's a capacity building thing that we need to do in the future.
Where are we with that?
Mayor Heinzman, that is embedded in the technology transformation plan and in that capital process already in terms of building inspection and bylaw.
What year is it? What year is it?
By my, I believe that it's, the development services side of it starts in 2018. And as far as that improvement, it could be late in 2018 or early 2019.
I think this is, I think, you know, this is where the technology improvement program, highly important, taking multiple, multiple years. But in terms of getting our brains around why this, like, why, why things as simple as a handheld device couldn't be done while we still improve other things like, and like, I'm getting my brain around the sequencing of this IT program is challenging.
So if I might, so we're buying, we're going to be buying a software that is compatible with our finance system. And they need to get the systems in place at the grassroots level in the department before they can take it out on the road. And so it sounds simple, like, let's just buy that piece of hardware. But the piece of hardware has to be tied back to something. It has to be able to talk to something. And it has to be able to talk to the finance system once all those primary things are placed. So it's one of those, yep, get it going, but it is phased. There's been some thought put into the phasing and how we're going to do it.
I think we will be progressing that at the end. Start to not just be theory. Go ahead.
Oh, Mayor Heinzman, I was just going to say that we have Conrad Cordell on deck to provide council another update on that program.
Okay, so let's not get too distracted. I, you know, great suggestion. So on the bylaw, I guess, one of my challenges with the adjudication person. So on the bylaw, I guess one of my challenges with the adjudication person is that we really have no, we have no clue what this role may or may not be or the necessity of this role because it's brand new. So from my point of view, you know, we have a thousand files, but how many tickets? And is it fifteen people that were taken to this adjudication process? And why do we need a point six or point four five seven or whatever the number is for that purpose? When we have no, and we almost feel like we should somehow figure out a way to assimilate it into what we have and then go, yeah, this is much bigger, we need to start growing it as opposed to just all of a sudden saying we need a point six.
Do you want to go?
Doug's confused, maybe.
We can both?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to Doug first. Because I think he's very patient with what I'm saying.
Maybe I did something because I thought what we were talking about was the actual personal duty on ground.
That's what, there's two positions.
Oh, which one are we talking about?
There's the adjudication, the.
Are we past this one here?
No, they're just part and parcel of the same budget discussion, part and parcel of what Jeff was just talking about. He mentioned about positions. So my question is more about the adjudication person than the need for that amount of person write-up. And we have, it could be five, it could be five files a year that we go to adjudication. It could be three hundred. I don't know. We don't know. And is there even close to having the revenue to get that back in any way? You can, Rock Paper Scissors.
I'll start and you can support or fill in where I'm wrong. So just to clarify a couple of points before, from what I heard, the bylaw officer that asks for a point six FTE, we wouldn't get to hiring that person likely till April. It's a point six annualized each year. So this, I wasn't sure if I'd heard that correctly. And the bylaw adjudication clerk is a point five FTE that works up to a point five seven, I think, in the budget. But it's a, it's a half-time, regular, a regular part-time, but a point five individual. And that individual will be doing, it's difficult to measure it on how many cases do they actually perform the screening officer role? Or how many, and then how many go to adjudication? They don't run the adjudication process. They're a step in the bylaw adjudication process. They, there's the bylaw adjudication registry that's run out of North Vancouver that we would be a member of or that we would sign up and pay for. And so if a file actually goes to an adjudication, it's the registry, that group that run, that the person has the adjudication with, so they call in. The bylaw officer would call in and they would.
I appreciate, I totally get all that. So how, can we, like, this will be, brand new, right? We haven't started this process really. Can we not in this year try to simulate it in what we have? Maybe we add in a visual person? So we get a critical mass of assessment of what the need is on this? I think we're wrong.
Okay, so when this first came up, when we were, we came up with the part-time person, that is actually based on the experience that the North Shore had, based on the volume that introducing this program landed on. So in, and also in addition to that, the last couple of years, we've got approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars in unpaid revenue from fines, from tickets. This person is going to help with the collection of those outstanding fines. There's not capacity right now in finance and we're working it out with this class as far as exactly what role finance is gonna have and what role the adjudication. But the first letters that go out, you know, you've got thirty days to pay your ticket, then you've got sixty days and you're ninety, and then bam off, it's gonna go to something like collections or probably more like the.
So in theory, these revenues cover this cost?
Yeah, we're hoping that we're gonna start because people don't pay their tickets in this town. We're gonna change that. And that is going to offset, offset this.
You're trying to guess the words.
But the person is also going, when, with the adjudication, they're going to be the intake for these disputes. They will be, do the initial labor on the ground for a dispute. And that requires some.
So we're assuming, assuming sixty-seven thousand dollars of revenue?
I'm, we're hopeful that we're gonna make sure people pay their fines.
So we had, I believe that sixty-seven thousand is spread over the two, two years. Well, if you look back, it's even longer, but one could only go back and collect for two years. The, the bylaw adjudication clerk is, is a position that has to have some specific knowledge about bylaws. So I would say this is a critical position. I did look to see and consulted with our union about having this position as a temporary position for a year. And the current collective agreement allows for us to create a temporary position for six months only and then we'll have to extend it. And, you know, certainly to hire the right person, being able to get more employment security is better. The union, we have to have mutual agreement on extending beyond six months initially. We don't have that.
Okay, so any more questions for staff? And then I think council needs to decide if we're leaving these at budget items in or not.
Another question.
Go ahead. Is there a question? Any question, Councilor?
Yeah, with all that, collecting, like collecting, but not only collecting, I look at our parking strategy as well and since we're implementing it, a lot of it has to do with ticketing. We had a bit, we had sent warnings, but also actually ticketing to ensure that people are switching every two hours. And we weren't enforcing that and it's not being enforced. So how does that all fit into it if we're gonna try and collect revenue and actually enforce our bylaws? If they're not being enforced, how do you expect people to pay them?
It sounds like a rhetorical question to council as opposed to a clarification?
No, I'm just wondering, like, if we have bylaws, there's rules that say this is two-hour parking. We haven't been ticketing for it. So I'm just wondering how this position changes enforcement? Are we gonna actually start enforcing to collect revenue?
Mayor Heinzmann, moving to the bylaw noticing aspect, with having a bylaw adjudication clerk in place allows us to write those tickets without personal service. Right now, what the officers have to do is go and seek out who's the registered owner, find that person and go and personally serve a ticket. You could perhaps get a ticket that's a, I think they're referred to as a love notice, like a warning kind of, they can place those. So my plan is to work with our bylaw manager and have him bring to council a draft for your deliberation, our bylaw enforcement policy, which, you know, we've, we've got much of it already from different directions from council, but to have that, which includes looking at the parking strategy. And it may need, as Council Elliot mentioned, bringing in some other equipment, so maybe meters downtown that will automatically increase revenue. Mr. Farina provided me an example from Harrison Hot Springs where they put in some kind of metering system for parking. And I can't quote the exact number, but it was over a hundred thousand dollars by putting that in. And, you know, so there's ways to do that, certainly not for today's discussion. But I think, I think we can continue to explore that while still having the increased capacity to meet the need for the bylaw officers and having that support by the adjudication clerk.
Okay, I wanna wrap this conversation up because there's people in the audience that people would like to speak to some things and we got lots more pressing issues. Is this a question?
Yeah, it's just a little small.
Okay, make it small.
Will we benchmark the increase in revenue? Is that gonna be benchmarked?
Of course.
Absolutely.
Doug?
Thanks. So I support this. Couple of comments. I know back in my early days as a lawyer, I used to do collections, not for tickets, but for other things. I can tell you, we'd be wildly optimistic to think we're going to get a hundred percent of that money that's outstanding. But also the other thing you learn is that by paying attention to it, you get something you're not gonna get if you don't pay attention to it. So I think there is something for this person to do. You're putting in a system like this, which, if I understand it correctly, is Council Prior's point, more like streamlining and simplifying the process and certainly from an administrative point of view. So if you're gonna do that, and I think we should be doing that, then I think we have to put the pieces in place to make that work. And if this person was just gonna sit there and wait for people to come in and want needed adjudication, yeah, maybe there's a bit of discussion. But if there's other things that they can do that are productive, then I think this is a good way to start off because you have that kind of backup, if you like. And so I would support this.
Would you support both bylaws?
Oh, yeah, both of them. The first one I thought was a no-brainer, but so it's adjudication. I thought it was a discussion here and so I can support that.
Any counter comments to that, to some of the fine payments? So I won't support it with keeping both of those in there for now?
Two halves.
Essentially two halves, yeah.
Point five and point six, I think.
Yes, Councilor?
Well, if it's a question, why we don't just have a one?
It may be a one.
Different jobs.
Different jobs.
Quite different jobs.
Different, different classifications within the collective agreement.
Do you need motion or you just wouldn't go there or?
Pardon me?
We're okay. Do you need a motion?
I think unless we want something taken out, we don't need the motion, is that correct? But we're fine. I think we're fine with all this, but.
So moving on to our.
Okay, we're gonna actually, I wanna just make sure, there's some people in the audience that have been sitting very patiently. We do have a letter from the Arts Council. I just wanna make sure we're, you know, while Cindy's still in the room. I'm not sure why I asked here, but it's always opportune for air comments, so. So maybe, maybe we can do this just very quickly, go to this blue sheet. Sydney, do you want to come up and speak to this? Does anyone have a chance to look at it? Sydney, you have to be really tight with your words, but maybe you can just outline this very briefly?
Absolutely. So in December, I came in front of the council to suggest the opening for an idea around community partnership with the Arts Council to enhance arts and culture in our community. In front of you, we drafted a request for a fee for service and this is a one-page summary with that request outlining a phased approach of financial assistance from the District of Squamish to support arts growth, culture, community in Squamish.
So just, I think, to give council some context, we do fee for service for the youth center, for example, with the Sky Community Services to the tune of. Twenty, I can't remember the numbers specifically. But that is, I think that's what you're suggesting is that we enter into some sort of similar type agreement. Do we have any other fee for service? We have some partnerships like the tourism Squamish, I guess. And we have, certainly the V I C, visitor information center is another fee for service, just to give an idea.
The center and SAR.
Search and rescue, the visitor information center, okay. And so just reading down here, Sydney, the Arts Council's requesting twenty-five thousand to start this servicing agreement essentially.
Exactly.
And, and is there a suggestion on where that funding comes from?
So we put in that in two thousand fifteen, there was about twenty-five thousand dollars set aside by the district towards the space allocation. Unfortunately, that never manifested. And so we actually are asking to reallocate use of these funds that were set aside by council in two thousand fifteen for the purposes of this. Upon strategic discussions with our board, we actually feel that in this present time, this would be the best use of these fines to grow arts in our community more actively.
So a question through the staff. If we had allocated in two thousand fifteen, twenty-five thousand dollars for this art space that never came forward, that money would have been just put into accumulated circles, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Like anything that's on.
Mayor Heinzmann, that, that would have been the process. That, that would be how it would work. Now, I believe we, we did look into this. My understanding is that it occurred in two thousand sixteen, so I was looking for, looking for that particular project or item and I haven't been able to find it.
I think it's two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen.
It was actually, we looked at motions up until January, January?
Yes.
February two thousand sixteen.
So it was in last year's budget?
Yeah, it came up again.
So it wasn't last year's budget?
Well, I don't know if it was in the budget. It was, there was council intent that it be in the budget.
However, I've had a search and haven't been able to find it.
Was it in two thousand fifteen's in budget and carried forward to two thousand sixteen, the intention?
It didn't look that way. It looked like it just had come up, maybe come up in December two thousand fifteen, but the actual was in January, February two thousand sixteen. Sorry, I didn't go back into two thousand fifteen when I found the two thousand sixteen motion.
So Mayor Heinzmann, as it stands, I haven't been able to find that particular item in the two thousand sixteen budget. There could be something that I am missing. If I could speak with Ms. Matthews when she returns, there might be something that I just haven't been able to find. But as it stands, it doesn't.
Counsel, any questions about this for yours, Councilor?
Twenty-five this year, fifty next year, seventy-five next year, a hundred next year. I'm not comfortable committing to five years of that.
And I, I think that's up for the debate, Pastor. Councilor?
Yeah, I might be comfortable in the sense that I'd like to know more about the programming before I want to commit to a partnership with them. However, I generally agree with the direction and think that this is someplace that we could go. It's perhaps a bit of a longer discussion than just a one-day discussion because it really, in my mind at least, it reflects a step up in, you know, our commitment to arts and the community and putting it on a different level than we had been before as part of a municipal amenity or municipal service. So, so from my mind today or less now, I can deal with the twenty-five thousand before in previous discussions, the source of funding, I think, is quite important to me. Hesitate to start taxing for it. But once again, I would like to see if, I recall the discussion about the space now that I've been reminded, but I can't tell you. I were going with Michelle to look at some space and actually. And so I can't tell you whether or not it made it to the budget or not, but I recall the issue that was around. So, but if there was money, it's probably in surplus, we might have tried to just spend a few minutes ago, but. It's the way it goes. But if there were other sources of funding, and, and I can't off the top of my head think what those might be, but I would like to see something like this start off. I think this is a good first step for at least this year and have the bigger discussion about the five-year commitment and just find the source of funding for it.
Thanks. Yeah, I agree with Doug sentiment somewhat. The one thing that I think about is that we do lack in art space and we don't save money for it. So we either completely go to grants and funding or we start using this as an opportunity to leverage money to create more space. And we had had, somebody else came to council and I believe we talked about getting a shed. We had a brief discussion about a shed for the lawnsports area, which is one thing that, you know, having worked in the arts for a really long time, I see as something that can be utilized as a money-making venue and might be something to be able to partner with the Arts Council for. So I'm definitely interested in having a long discussion about this. I'm definitely supportive of the funding for this year. And if it's leveraged to create more space for arts, I'd be interested in, in looking at funding more long-term because it's definitely something that is, I miss, I do, we lack in art space.
Go ahead, Sydney.
Part of this leveraging of fines is incredibly important, we realize, to optimize all opportunities available for us. So the intent with the funding is to really also to focus on leveraging these fines with further grantee bodies such as the V I C Arts Council, provincial government, et cetera, to further maximize the potential benefits to the community with these sort of particular funds.
Yeah, I think that's some of the challenge with the Arts Council right now is if you don't have that little bit of money, you can't even get that little bit more money. You cannot get that little bit more money. I think, I mean, this is still pretty toky in terms of getting, bringing up our arts and cultural programming, but, but it's a start. but, but it's a start, so I think, I'm not hearing any opposition to the idea of at least moving forward with the twenty-five grand and engaging in the bigger conversation about what are, are, are programming goals in the future? And aside from that is art space issues too, whether we're in our current facilities, whether we're different, that's a whole other conversation. But I think we'd like to understand if this was taxed for, and it is theoretically sitting in accumulated surplus from before, in which case, would, would it need to even be in this budget, or could we reallocate it, or how would we deal with that? Or we can certainly put it in this budget and reallocate, whatever the best way to go is, is what I'm trying to say.
If we were able to determine that it was in fact included taxation, then yes, it would be, and the project didn't go forward.
Yeah.
Then it would be in, in surplus, so then we wouldn't be able to use surplus for this particular project. If it's, if it wasn't, then I think we could possibly still look into the use of surplus for this particular project. I'm not sure at this particular time if there are any other sources of funding outside of taxation that I am aware of.
Yeah, and then it becomes a bit of a philosophical, you know, more reallocation, is it, is this the type of thing because we anticipated continuing on, we should actually fund through revenue, and maybe there's one-off projects somewhere else that we should fund through surplus? So that's more of a philosophical debate exactly where those pots of money come from, but. So counsel, any more questions or comments on this?
Well, just a question on, what do we put in the budget every year for art salad?
Arts programming? There is, there's, there's just the funnel-through funds of twenty thousand dollars to the, to the groups, like between shifts and. There is no actual funding beyond that, except the way. And, and a minimal rent for the building, yeah. I think it's four hundred dollars a year or something, so it's not a lot. So yeah, so we don't essentially fund art programming, I mean, there's certainly through the rec center, there's some dance classes, and there's minimal amount through the rec programming right now, but it's really minimal, very minimal. We don't do, we haven't.
Does your council have a bank account?
No, we do have a bank account, yeah. We do receive grant funding, so we do have a financial system put in place. We do our bookkeeping and submit for yearly financial statements. That's also a part of supplying for a lot of these businesses that require this.
And, and, and with entering into a fee-for-service agreement, all that information comes to us as we go through the process of establishing this fee-for-service?
Yeah. No, I'm good with the twenty-five, and I welcome the broader conversation. We had a pretty interesting talk. I think there's a lot of good talk we can go over and interesting ideas to toss around.
So because this is a new item, I'll make a motion from council to include it in the draft. We're gonna figure out a way to finance it somehow, so I leave that motion from council. Look like council, wait a second, wait council, how? All the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I did want to, we did get a letter from Janet Martenson on snow plowing the downtown sidewalks. I just wanted to make sure it was brought into public record, and I'm wondering if staff can maybe respond, talking about the possibility of a speeding machine in our budget, and how that may or may not, if staff could respond to that one? Because it's to me, I can respond. I think it's more of an operational issue, so I think it should be staff responding, but yes.
Well, I thought it was up to, in the downtown area where the problems are, I thought it was up to the store owners. It was his responsibility to do the sidewalks, not ours to buy a new machine. I understand a new machine for the quarter trail and the sidewalk going up to the university and some of those big long stretches.
So what?
To require that needs later.
You missed the whole conversation about this, so maybe I'll. A week ago, whenever it was. So one of the things that was talked about was a lot, there was a lot of non-compliance with property owners, and you pointed this out a couple times. With the machine, we can essentially, if they don't do their due diligence and clear their sidewalk, we go and do it, and we send them the bill. So.
Well, it's funny, before I left on my, my thing, my daughter and I were driving, and I was scanning the list. I thought, I'm gonna do a list of this. So we started phoning them up, and they said, oh, you want me to look them up? And they are on the phones, and we started phoning people up and saying, he realizes about them, just like, oh, they were saying things like, well, he hired someone to do our snow. Well, they do the parking lot, but they don't do the sidewalk. Oh, so anyway, there is an appetite out there.
To do better?
For people to be responsible. It just takes a little.
Yeah. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor Heinzman. I wonder if it might be okay if I spoke through the marine strategy issue?
Yeah, let, let's just, I just wanted to just hold that thought, I just wanted to, just, we just wanted to highlight this letter that was in front of us. Everyone's okay with that? Okay. We're going to marine strategy, go ahead. I think we have a letter on that too, Cindy?
Yeah.
So this is really in advance, I know that Gary Buxton is prepared to some repeat there, and I, I suppose what I could say is easily enough said beforehand, hopefully addressed that. So I've got so many papers up here, she should, I just may take this.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm speaking here today from the Squamish and District Forestry Association. And we have, over the past three months, I would say, that you have had your budget discussions, and this marine strategy item has come up in your, in your various sheets. Been following this issue and discussing with a number of other stakeholders. We, I have here a list of fifty marine Squamish stakeholders, including property owners, facility owners, industrial organizations, recreation organizations, regrecreation agencies, and business organizations. You had a few of them represented here today, but we couldn't stay. Squamish Terminals earlier today, and Search and Rescue, Mike Keane was here earlier, and unfortunately, they couldn't stay. We have the Chamber of Commerce representative in Louise Walker, a member of this list and part of our active discussion. So I would say to start, if you were to call a scheduled opportunity for us to come to speak to you on marine strategy, you'd fill the room. That is the level of interest and concern regarding this issue. I'll touch on a few issues as briefly as I can. Firstly, the urgency of marine strategy from the forestry association's perspective, shared by others, we gather. The geographic scope of a marine strategy, marine strategy as it's treated in the new O C P in draft, and the relative priority of the strategy among other waterfront initiatives, some are on Gary Buxton's list, we'll come to later. And who should be involved in, who should undertake it, and with what resources? So a marine strategy, as Mayor Heinzman has pointed out a couple of meetings ago, a draft outline for a marine development strategy was brought before council in 2008, and the title is important, Marine Development Strategy. It did have a certain interest or focus, and there's other focuses that are of potential interest as well, but it was a good outline, and I recommend it for consultation. The project was not pursued by council and only limited progress has been made so far, Phase One of a marine strategy with some mapping and recommendations. Now, report, the final report on Phase One was delivered in March 2012. And during the five years since that, the forestry association has each year regularly emphasized the need to get underway with the Phase Two, and we've been joined by others, importantly, Squamish Terminals. Now, the geographic scope, of all the Phase Two update reports we've heard, and I've listened to about half a dozen over the last two years, the latest one is the one that gives us most concern, because it seems that it's most unclear as regards terms of reference to geographic scope. Now, I mean, that confusion may be alleviated, but this picture doesn't seem to be getting more clear, especially with respect to geographic scope. There's a strong consensus among all those that we speak to, including in the recreation and, and marine sector, that the marine strategy should be taking in a scope beyond the blind channel. The marine strategy in the O C P, as Squamish Strategic Management Committee members, some of us have seen draft sections of the new O C P. And we advise that we should not be overestimating how adequately the O C P is dealing with marine strategy. There's a whole new issues there of confusion and things that need to be discussed and sorted out. There's policies proposed for a marine action strategy and for a marine working group, and they're in the natural environment section, and they do not refer to marine transportation objectives or coordination of waterfront users. This has been brought up at Squamish Strategic Management Committee meetings, but we have not met, and there is no meeting scheduled. We have no idea when that opportunity may come. Because there's also little clarity as to how a proposed marine working group, to be appointed by council, overlaps with the Strategic Management Committee and its mandate. So there's real confusion. The confusion in some way seems to be growing among some of us in concern. So, next, relative priority among waterfront initiatives, some of them are listed in the blue sheet that you have today, and they include waterfront landing subterranean plan, waterfront rezoning, mapcom blind channel development permit guidelines, and district waterlog visa applications, among other initiatives. It may be assumed that, that the draft, that these different initiatives will cover or capture much of what should be in a marine strategy, but an alternative way of thinking is that the marine strategy should inform these initiatives, the O C P, the waterfront and out-upland zoning, the D P A guidelines, the lease acquisition strategies, or their priority, and that this would be the best way to consider how to apply a marine strategy lens. Looking through the list of initiatives ongoing, here on your, on your sheet, under the issue.
Eric, I need you to get to the point of, do we need to fund it this year or not? I'm hearing.
Yes, there is need. And not only that, but you should be looking at outside help, because clearly, we were looking, if we go beyond the blind channel, you're looking at involving stakeholders outside the community and agencies and so on. And a lot of us feel this is timely, and not least Wood Fiber L and G, who are involved in both sides of the water. And there is federal and provincial monies, and our association with Squamish Terminals, over the years, have been conversations with provincial government in, in particular, and for suitably scoped marine strategy, there, there would be outside senior government support. So a marine strategy at this time for Squamish, we shouldn't overestimate how we, how we would be able to do it in incremental fashion. We, we need the overall. And it would be an opportunity to address marine light industry. We're not addressing that at all right now. There is no plan for marine and light industry. Safety and emergency preparedness, we have some concerns, and, and our colleagues in the Search and Rescue have some issues to bring before you. Coastwise vessel facilities for barges, ferries, and so on, lots of big issues.
No, I, I think we hundred percent know there's a lot of issues. And council has been debating through the budget process, the need to make sure we're accurate on it, this year and not next year. I don't think it's currently in this year, it's currently in 2018, but it is absolutely council's prerogative to bring it forward into this year's, and I would, I would agree, it needs to be done in a comprehensive fashion, not in a negative fashion. I think it, and, and I would agree, we probably have to outsource this. I would like us to understand exactly how we can get funding from other sources to do this. But I, I just, I mean, we can have a whole discussion about marine strategy, but what would we focus in on? Do we budget for it this year, and then determine if we do budget for it, can we nail down the scope a bit and the, and the engagement and all that side. Mina, do you want to speak to this quickly, or Gary?
I'm gonna have Gary speak to it, and.
I, I think the conversation that.
Thanks, Eric.
One of the things about you here is figure out what this, what this thing is. I mean, some work's been done, some work remains undone, putting, putting some brackets around this. I don't know how effective that's gonna be done with a consultant. I mean, we could certainly put money in the budget and engage a consultant to try and at least in 2018, put some framework around what the, what the strategy could do. Given planning is, I mean, the O C P to finish off the zoning bylaws coming up right away, along with a bunch of other initiatives, I'm difficult, there's just a capacity issue even on how many projects I can manage. In terms of having some money to scope, to have a consultant, consultant to scope work to be then undertaken in 2018 as likely possible, as I said last time, I'm sort of loathe to commit to council, we can get this done in 2018, because it appears at this point in time, the scope isn't defined, and then the capacity even manage the project through 2017 is going to be tricky.
Just for clarity, I think, Gary, you mean getting it done in 2017, you said 2018?
Sorry, yes, wrong year, yeah, sorry.
And further to what Mr. Buxton has said, it's, you know, planning's main priorities right now really are O C P zoning and creating of the zoning bylaw. To switch those out is, those are such priorities that we can't, even consultants require management. We're just very cautious and realistic with council in terms of we don't want to overpromise and, and underdeliver.
The last marine strategy done for the District of Squamish was completed in 1991. It was a chapter of a general economic strategy plan that happened to have been undertaken by a port planning consultant. There are a number of port planning consultants on the B C coast, and a number of communities have undertaken, and really this is what we're talking about, is a port plan, a general plan for the District of Squamish waterfront, Wood Fiber right around to Wox Point, and so there are some good precedents elsewhere for a general plan that's needed. And even the 1991 treatment is rather light and brief and concise, but it is a foundational piece that now needs to be updated.
Yeah, and one of the reasons it hasn't been done is because it's a huge job. Just getting the scope of what a marine strategy is scares enough people out that we've never pushed it through. I'd put a number of about three to five hundred thousand to do a marine strategy.
No.
No. Well, that's the number I put out there. You have to sit in this chair for a while before you realize how money's spent. You know, you got one.
Well, that's not, that's not debate.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's a huge job.
Well, we're told it's a hundred and three in this. Is that one with that, or?
No, no.
It's out?
Anyway, I mean, I'd be, I'd be supportive of figuring out the scope of a marine strategy, you know, so we know what it is. Because that's the first thing we're gonna do anyway. We're not gonna just say, okay, let's do a marine strategy, because we'll have to get all the range together, and everybody else will know.
And a number of years ago, when I was first on council, we very generically scoped out a harbor strategy and a marine strategy, and they're different things, and I think what Eric's talking about is fundamentally a harbor strategy. And the marine strategy was a slightly different thing, and I can't remember the differentiation in my brain at the moment, but maybe Counselor Reese can fill it in. I read, I'm not good really, I've got a headache. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, do we put in, are we getting a new Economic Development Officer position this year?
We're starting soon.
Yes, our new Economic Development Officer starts February 6th.
I'm wondering if this might be something that that person, you know, might have as part of their duties, is sort of thinking about how we move that forward in 2018, on my, my budget and kind of getting the ball rolling, because I agree, I can understand why the stakeholders don't want us to just kick the can and say, oh, we'll think about it in 2018, but I also have been hearing very clearly that staff really doesn't have the resources to do it this year, so maybe we may, I don't know, see if it was imaginable to that, maybe consider that.
What do you think about that, and I'll go through council's side. Yes, too, yeah. Karen Dobson?
Yeah, I think for me, the pig and the python is the O C P, and, you know, we'll certainly welcome.
Python.
The pig and the, the thing that's.
In the python.
Yeah, the python, the nature.
To me, that's still the priority, get it done, and I think there's opportunity to address some of the concerns that are in the community that Eric brought up through that process, not completely, but to adjust policy. Not completely, but to adjust policy in the zoning bylaw and the OCP where we can in the short term. I think this is a great year to scope out what our harbor strategy or marine strategy would look like, or whether we can do both simultaneously. And also to look for those funds because from senior levels of government. And we need time to put those in place. So that next year's big project is actually doing it. But I will, I've said this before, we just need to get the OCP done.
Thank you. Yeah, we've had this, we've had this word marine, words marine strategy used for a couple of different things over the years. And there's been a little bit of confusion between them. And before I got on council, probably the time that Einstein was referring to, there was thought of having a quote marine strategy to be funded by a grant from the province in the amount of close to $500,000. I think council fire is absolutely correct. And it didn't come, and so it didn't go ahead.
I'm writing that down Ted, just so you know.
And when I got on council, to focus, we started thinking about a marine strategy. And we were restricting ourselves to the blind channel and the Catamaran Sulu. Because we were thinking about more as a small craft marine strategy. We had issues with people anchoring, marine issues, dredging issues. Things of that nature, how you share the costs of these things. And so it was almost deliberately confined to that just because otherwise it does become almost an unmanageable job. And we walked into a sort of a legislative nightmare, which is now just starting to kind of unravel and sort of become workable. So I don't disagree with Mr. Anderson. I think there is, I think there is some consideration we should have to the deep sea aspect of, I'll call it that, you know, with the port and the wood fiber and any other kind of commercial transportation opportunities that might come along. And using the EDO for that, at least scope it, I think is an excellent idea. Because we haven't, in all the discussions since I've been on council, we've never expanded the scope to be include the deep sea ports and wood fiber, anything like that. It's always been pretty much focused on small craft. My urgency, and when I look down this list, is just, is quite focused. And I think about, you know, how we've just gone through the integrated flood hazard management plan. Three-year project, significant work required. But we had a need at the outset to get some clarity on the blind channel area to allow things to go ahead there. And so that was kind of put to the front of the list. And we got clarity on that, and then off everybody went to finish up the rest of the program. And I think, from my perspective, there is some urgency along the blind channel. Just with some of the issues there, some of them are highlighted as in progress and so forth. Because of development pressure, and I recognize the need for these other things. But I think that is just on a slightly longer timeframe. And when I say the blind channel, I'm thinking primarily on the downtown side of the blind channel, not the industrial side of the blind channel. I think that, for the moment at least, is a pretty well-done deal or a set deal. So I think there is some urgency to it, not the whole project. I'm focused more on downtown development to deal with some of the pressure we're getting in that area.
Thanks. To let her, I'm just looking at the letter that was written to us in 2014. And the urgency, a lot of it is economic development related. And I would agree with having attention put to the items that Mr. Anderson brought up. Was how do we interface light marine with our ocean ports, marine transit, and the things that haven't really been, you know, a lot of the development on Mamquon Blight Channel, as council rates have said, the small vessel movement back and forth and dredging and whose responsibility. But really, we haven't really put our minds around the economic development of living on an ocean. We have some zoning down on the oceanfront as well for land marine. And I just wonder, I do see that as a place for an economic development officer to sort of put our mind to the land use and what opportunities are there for, and what opportunities can be lost as far as logging and forestry. Like would any of the, any of the marine travel that needs to be interfaced? The other one was marine passenger transport.
The list is endless, I think.
There's actually five items.
Well, and there's, anyway. We know there's a need for it. The trick is figuring out how do we move forward on it in 2017. We have a new EDO starting, and there's a strategy and act. Actually, I'm just, let me just summarize in a, the strategy. We have, we have a bit of a marching orders or work plan for the EDO. I guess the question, and I think most councillors are saying, maybe this is something that can come under the EDO's portfolio in terms of initiating this in 2017, moving it forward. Certainly from a scoping and engagement and getting it going point of view. And I'm looking for staff. Now, you had a specific question?
I'm wondering if there wasn't, if there wasn't a phase, I remember there being a phase three. Yeah, there was a phase three in here, but then we only got to phase two here. What was included in phase three?
And, well, I don't think we're going to answer that today. Because we need, we're talking budget, okay? So Linda?
I have to admit, council, that I do have a bit of a fear with this new economic development officer coming on, that a whole bunch of things are going to start getting loaded onto this position as a catchall. The current priorities of the economic development officer with the economic development strategy and additional strategy, that position is full. It is going to be very busy and overloaded as it is. If managing a consultant to scope to marine strategy is something council wants us to prioritize, I would go back and look at the expectations of that position and shift some of the things out of one or two or both of those strategies into 2018. So things would shift. It's not an add, it's not an add-on, I don't believe. I mean, the position hasn't started, but the expectations are quite high given the two strategies this person will be leading.
I'd be totally happy if taking the economic strategy, opening the marine strategy on his desk. They're almost one and the same. Totally happy. He's been fighting for economic development strategies in Squamish for 20 years. Nothing's ever materialized. Right, Eric? I mean, marine strategy, if he could get to work on marine strategy, that is economic development. It's sea planes, it's wind servers, it's freighters, it's.
So a prioritization of the EDO's work plan. I just want to make sure if we have that ability, and we do have that ability, that we're planning for it in budget. Because some things do have a different budget in terms of processing plans or moving through it. Let me go to Eric quickly and.
I'm not sure what a $500,000 study would look like. It'd probably be very exciting, but I don't think it's what we need or what any of us are contemplating. What we're really after is more of a policy strategic document with mapping in more detail than we have in the Estuary Management Plan and in other levels of treatment than we would do in OCP. So that we're not talking, we're talking about a level, a degree of a project. I don't think I would envision any differently than the economic action plan that was undertaken last year, to be honest with you. But I think that the most important thing that I'll close out with, the most important thing is to bring together that forum. I'm concerned that you're underestimating the number of issues out there that you don't, you're not aware of, opportunities and needs. So the forum is the most important thing. And if we could, the economic development officer can help facilitate that. But I just thought I'd comment, on a level of scale of project, it's more of a strategic document rather than a half a million dollar.
And a mapping document.
Could not before the, well, once the OCP draft policy is out there, couldn't our planning staff and our EDO call for a meeting? Or we're consulting with several different interest groups. So couldn't that be part of our OCP meeting process to at least put the issues on the table, see what can be addressed through the OCP policy or the zoning bylaw update or the, you know, whatever impetus and issues we have. At least the conversation would start in the nearer term. And then we could talk with a real person, who is our EDO, and say, if these are priorities, how would, how would we reprioritize? So that we're actually talking about real things with a real person and not trying to make those decisions today. But, but a conversation is, to me, part of engaging on OCP and to bring those 50 people together. That's a meeting I'd like to go to and listen to what they have to say. And it'd be great if our EDO and our planner on the OCP did that, once the draft is up.
Okay, we need to move on. We need to have a break. We need a five-minute break. We need to move on. So unless there's new information or new comments?
Is that something that isn't in our OCP? I mean, should that not have been in our OCP? Is the marine is.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
Very short comment.
I think, I take the point about the EDO. And from my perspective, when I made the comment, I was thinking kind of at a high level and scoping thing. I think when you get down to actually building that strategy, it's going to take some specialized experience in the marine world. And I'd be amazed if anybody, I don't have it, I can tell you right now. You'd want to get some people who are, have expertise in commercial aspects with all kinds of different things that come into play there. So I think at some point, somebody's going to be managing, a consultant. And that's, but that's not day one. What we want to kind of do is sort of figure out what we're trying to achieve, first of all.
I'm sorry, Mary, it's been, probably another conversation, but in terms of the EDO or a staff member doing this, I think that the clarity that I need at some point is, we talk about scoping, but what is council's objective? Is that what council's looking for in terms of what a marine strategy will achieve? Does council have specific objectives on what you want the new strategy to achieve in terms of what the scope looks like?
We'll get an important conversation in the next meeting. Another time, yeah. Okay, we've got still a lot of, did you want to say something? Come on up.
Yeah, I just have like 25 minutes.
Come on up.
I was just wondering, because I was listening in on all the conversation.
So you haven't been out of microphone yet? Or join us at the table, either.
Chris Small with the Small Sharks Society. And I'm wondering about, I was listening in on all of this, on the Smokeless conversation. And I didn't really hear a commitment, like, there was no resolution made on whether that, whether that funding, that was going to occur or not. And that's all I really.
Yeah, I know that's, I know that we intended to, but I'm not sure we actually did ratify it. But I think we were happy to do that. I think we sort of said 66,000 in revenue, hopefully 30 from gravel. And then trying to figure out where we top that up to 100. And staff is going to bring that back to council to consider in terms of where we find the funding sources for that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, so that, I believe that's, yeah, thanks a lot. Can we take five minutes for this? We've been doing this for four hours almost now, so. Well, we were supposed to be done by now. But we still have quite a bit more, we still have more to do. And there's, I, we need to talk about the housing, the housing piece as well. Can we commit to finishing up where we are at 6:30? We are, we are going to be late, and where we are at 6:30, that's what's going to go to the public on the 31st. Still has an opportunity for people to comment and ask for it to deliberate, but at least we go with the document. I'm wondering if council, just before we take a five-minute break, will entertain, entertain the opportunity to have a special meeting? And we, do we need council, we need council here, and what do we put into the process?
Council will pass a resolution to waive notice. And then we'll fill in the blank pursuit to section, whatever the.
Moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Kent, but we need waive notice.
But you have to do that separately outside of the committee of the whole.
We're not, we're in recess at the committee of the whole right now.
Okay.
Sorry. We're in recess. We've taken a five-minute break, that's why I was doing that, sorry.
So waive notice and pursuit to section, we'll fill in the blank community charter. Have a special council meeting.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Scope, leave it, that we waive notice, and we hold a question on that?
And then, yeah, so, so take a vote.
All those in favor, opposed, which we carries? So then we can have, now we're in a special meeting? In a special meeting, there's an agenda, item to early release of funds for the breathing apparatus for the fire hall so that we can maximize the opportunity to, to, I was going to say piggyback, but that's not right, Karen. Take advantage of, of purchasing with the North Shore Fire Halls. And that's the agenda. So motion to approve the agenda. Moved by councillor Ray, seconded by councillor Elliott. All those in favor? Those motion carries? And so the motion that was in the committee of the whole meeting comes back with council. I don't know if you can read that really quickly, Karen, or not.
Yeah, I just have to find it. That council authorized early release of SCBA, I don't have that printed yet, funds, item 10, in brackets, to take advantage of North Shore joint purchase.
Moved by councillor Kent, seconded by councillor Ray. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Should we leave this meeting open for now, just in case there's another motion? Okay, so we're in recess. Thank you. We're back to the budget. We're getting a little giddy because the budget is going through, you know, the oxygen supply of the room and all that sort of stuff. I want to make sure we have a wholesome discussion about the housing. The housing position, we won't do that until Jason's in the room.
I'm right here.
Oh, there you are. Couldn't see you. So, and then maybe, so what do we have left on our agenda list? We have special projects, so I'm looking for any in favor.
If I may, Mary Heintzmann. We have to go through our special projects, which should be quick. And then we can address the housing coordinator, considering that's a special project for the current year. And then really just rounding it off, thinking of our next steps. And lastly, we have to, we have on the agenda the port property taxation.
Okay, so we're going to go through, hopefully, special projects really quickly. Among them is the, this one here, okay?
Okay, go for it. All right, so special projects. Fast facts, currently net impact on requisition is five, just under 502,000. And you can see it's under our target and it's under last year's level as well. We specified that.
Is being under this target good or bad?
It's good. It'll, it'll.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Sometimes if you haven't met the target, it's bad.
At the moment, given the pressures that we have on our property tax revenues, I think this is, this is just where we made a lot of cuts. And getting to the cuts that we considered in prior budget workshop, here are our changes. We reduced the boundary extension by 30,000. We delayed our lock standardization project, so that was a decrease of 10,000. We reduced our emergency services special project budget by 5,000. We removed the special project related to the budget online tool, so that was a decrease of 3,000. We delayed our cemetery master plan, which gave us another 40,000. Removed the RCMP chairs special project. And we have delayed both the arena sport flooring and the arena concession upgrades. 65,000 related to the flooring and 15,000 related to concessions. We have reduced the safe routes to school by 13,506, so that is currently sitting at the original scope, shall we say, no, not no consideration.
We had added a bit because we thought it would take in some independent schools, but really we're hitting all the marks with the existing funding.
That, that was a takeaway from the last workshop, yes. We have added, based on direction from last week, LNG tax agreement special project, which is fully funded by donation. And we also have an economic development contract services place mark essentially for 20,000 right now.
But we don't know what that is per se?
Not per se. It's a little open-ended at the moment, is my understanding.
I think fundamentally, we designed by the EDO, you know, we just don't have those pieces. Correct. Perfect example.
Perfect example, Marine strategy. We would need at least 25,000 for a consultant to scope that. We do anticipate that every year the EDO will have some level of project budget.
Okay.
And I will mention that this does not address, doesn't include what we've just discussed in relation to the Arts Council fee-for-service, which is the 25,000 of which we are looking into the funding source.
Okay. Thank you.
And with that, we can discuss the housing coordinator, unless there are any other questions about the changes that have been made.
Okay.
Okay. Sure, I can start out. Just as a reminder for council, at this time, the budget item for housing coordinator is in special projects. Staff or management had originally indicated perhaps it's a, it's a contract where someone comes in and then essentially tells us the kind of program, do we need a full-time person? That said, as we continue to have conversations and, you know, the mayor and I had a great meeting with some nonprofit societies that are working to, you know, a land trust group and then essentially nonprofit developers, that there are opportunities out there for us to work on shovel-ready projects in addition to other elements of a housing program. And so Gary Buxton and then I helped with some editing, put together a job description essentially for council's discussion. Similar to other positions, it would be difficult to hire someone for six months that had these qualifications likely. And if it was a union position, we could only post it for six months. So it could also, at this point, when I look at this job description, if this is what council wants to hire, I would recommend that it be a full-time employee and not a one-time contract. That said, by the time we get someone hired, if that's the way we go, then it would be for a half-year, which is essentially what's in the budget now, which is transferring to service level increases opposed to special projects. And then next year it would be another service level increase at a half-year to annualize it.
Yeah, I, I, this is a very specialized sort of skills. And more akin to, in my mind, a planner-type role. Or, you know, and I just don't know how or if it would even be in the executive agreement necessarily or if it would be exempt. I just don't know what the proponent to that would be or what the need would be. So from dealing with from a contract point of view, particularly if we don't necessarily have the answer right today now, we say that housing authority is a, is a project management for shovel-ready projects. Like, I get this description, but I just, yeah, I'm just trying to get it around my brain around, well, I couldn't do it on contract because really we'll know so much more in a year. In terms of where it might place within our organization or where it might place amongst our organization or, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm also wondering too, in terms of some of the discussion that happened in the last time this was talked about last week. The, or the, uh, I thought we were also maybe considering the option of early release of funds to actually get the project going, getting the housing coordinator on staff as soon as possible. And I'll just sort of reiterate to our benefit tech who wasn't at the meeting that one of my concerns is that we're going to miss a bit of a funding window here in the next few months because the province and the federal government are both doing their budgets. And, you know, there are some significant, uh, significant desires on the part of the decision makers to put money into housing right now, and that may not be the case next year. So, you know, in my opinion, I think that from what I've seen when I was at UBCM and took in a very good session by the president of the BCU Nonprofit Housing Association, and they talked a lot about what successful projects look like and what was involved. And in every case that they talked about, there was very significant involvement from the municipality from a coordination perspective. So in, you know, in their view, it is very difficult, especially in a, in a context like this, for, you know, projects to get to that stage, especially when the city or municipality is offering land and coordinating that. It's, it's really, really important. And the other thought that I had, and I don't know if staff had, had an opportunity to look into this, but I thought because this is a special program, you know, maybe we need to be looking out for at least this year, maybe funding it out of the Affordable Housing Reserve rather than taxation because it's sort of like a launching off point to get the ball rolling. And then from there, you know, I think a year from now, we will have an idea as to what the longer-term scope is. So that's, that's my two cents.
So question about funding the contract initial of this, for this year through, you have Affordable Housing Reserve. Can we do that?
I have to look to the finance experts on the front.
Yeah, and you're her. You're it.
I'm sorry.
Oh, we got you. Aw, nice move to step up.
I'm not, I'm not...
You have to, you have to sit at a desk, thanks.
I'm not aware of the restrictions of that reserve, so I would have to go back and have a look.
If we, if we could get that, that would be, I think, we would have more. Are you good?
Yep.
Uh, Ted?
Well, I thought those were both fabulous ideas. I like the contract idea. In the end, I just, because I think that might make someone deal a little harder. And I think you're absolutely right. There's going to be funding coming soon, and you better be ready for it. A little good, I guess.
It's really helpful to actually have this in front of us. We did have this last time, so I really appreciate that. So I, this is a big job. And I'm not sure that I understand whether we're hiring a policy person or a business development person. And then we've got also responsibility to develop and manage an eligibility program for the Affordable Housing Unit, which is like a totally different job altogether and takes up a lot of time. So, and then I'm, you know, I agree with Jason, there's like a time crunch here. So I almost see this in the first year as that, in the short term, we want to pull in a policy planning person to get the inclusionary zoning and CAC policy done lockstep with the OCP and the zoning review, so that's done early in the year. And then we need someone who's put together joint projects, shovel-ready projects in the short term to have something ready before the spring. And then if we pulled in two separate people this year, very specific roles, and then we look outside the district to our not-for-profits to see if anybody wants to develop and manage an eligibility program for how we would monitor these things, then we could accomplish three tasks very quickly. And then plan for funding an ongoing position starting next year. Because I, it would be great to tap into the Affordable Housing Fund, but we worked so hard to build that up for housing, that I'm kind of loathe to spend it on a person. But I think we could accomplish two tasks quickly if we split this role in the short term to get where we need to go quickly. Because we're missing out on inclusionary zones and we're missing out on not having a shovel-ready project. And if we hire one person, they're not going to be able to do both of those things in a short timeframe. So that's my only concern. I am supportive of the idea. I'm just trying to get us to where we need to go faster.
Thanks. I would agree with those sentiments. And I too think that, you know, we've been working really hard to build up the CAC so we have money in reserve so that we can build the project. And we're going to need that money to counter BCU housing money. As far as financial viability of this, I still think that, you know, I do support this position as far as for exactly those reasons, the policy piece position, the inclusionary zoning, and taking that off of the side of somebody's desk. I think it's really important to move those things forward. And I do support this position for those reasons. But I do also believe that our district is growing at such a rapid rate that we are behind on having the housing authority. You know, and we can manage money and single projects, and this will get us to one project maybe really quickly. But as far as a long-term ability to take in units instead of dribblings of CAC, we need to be able to take in units from developers. And we need to look at not just affordable housing, but employee housing. Because our businesses can't afford to bring in people anymore. It's household. So all, exactly. So how we manage all of that and with our, with our community partners, I see this position as working with community partners to develop a way that we can take in units and look to a long-term strategy. And then without this person, I can't see it being done off the side of the desk. I don't see it really as a temporary position because there's always going to be work to be done within this area and the borough community. So, but, and I'm not, I, I'd like to hear the rationale more of using CAC funds when this is a position that we know, we all know rationing is going to end up doing so much work that we're not going to be able to afford to lose it next year. So as far as sustainability, we need to be able to budget for it.
We can, we can fund it in taxation, actually.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, I'd like to understand the reasoning of taking from the fund that we've already had to build up.
I have a feeling it was, is if council wants to lessen the burden on taxation, we could do one, I think that's as simple as it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight, and I'm sure finance app probably doesn't have the exact numbers right now, but I'm assuming, I, I, last I heard, I think the reserve was getting up close to about $2 million. So, I mean, if we think about, you know...
Whether it's actually money in the bank yet or not is another thing.
Right. But, I mean, I think it's safe to say that we wouldn't be raiding the entire fund to pay for this person. And I think ideally, and you know, I don't want to prejudge what the experts will say, but I think in an ideal scenario, you could see over the long term and even once the projects are actually built, that that kind of coordination position can be self-funded through the revenue that comes through. Because again, we're talking about a kind of a mixed income kind of project, so there is revenue to be gained from that. But, but yeah, I mean, I, I think that that's sort of the impetus. And, you know, yeah, we, you know, this year we're in a bit of a crunch, so maybe we can look at other sources.
Look, yeah, I said this a couple of weeks ago too. When I first gone council, another year ago, we were in a similar type up cycle. Maybe not quite as profound as this one, but it was significant for the time. It was an equally big job at the time. And we did a lot of policy work, and then there was a down cycle with the Olympics. You know, the Olympic hangover in 2008, the economy downturn globally. And we never acted on those things back then. And I, I'm, you know, we all have our issues we're passionate about. I've come to the conclusion if we're ever going to move the dial on housing, we really need someone focused on it. Whether that is in this year's budget, the, you know, full-time job in this year's budget or not, we need someone this year to get it going and move it forward. How that gets defined in the end, and this person, you know, that has these multiple skills may be out there. It may not be the person writing the inclusionary zone, but they're going to have a good sense of what it is and what's needed. So I don't think, you know, the skills in here are necessarily two people. They could easily be one, one person. And I think fundamentally, you know, whether it's a housing authority is the vehicle that delivers this or whether it's nonprofit partnerships or whatever, I think that's a whole conversation that we need to, you know, we're not there yet, and we all know we need to do something. We're not there yet. And we know that we need to do something. So fundamentally for me, I think we need to move forward on this. I, I do think it's going to be an ongoing expense. I do agree that fundamentally it should be or could be self-funding through, through the revenues generated through projects that come forward. And so does it need to be put into our salary landscape? I think that's a discussion. But I think this first year, we don't know those things. And I, and maybe we'll get a number on the, what's in the Affordable Housing Reserve. But I see this, you know, we can put tons of money into the Affordable Housing Reserve and you're only going to get X amount of this. And, you know, with the amount of money in there, we only get 10 units in total. If we actually put it into someone who can actually move these things forward, leverage all these partnerships out there, we'll get, get much, much more and comprehensively make sure that we're getting those units within the inclusionary zoning sort of concept of things. So I, you know, I'm, I'm fully supportive of moving forward. I'd like, I, for me, I think it should be almost a contract this year because I wouldn't want to lay it out in stone exactly what this job entitles because we really don't know yet. This is sort of a bit of a working role. Susan and Doug and Ted.
No, I didn't.
Oh, no, sorry, it was Ted and Doug. I saw him.
Yeah, sorry, Ian. Doug, you want to go next?
Go ahead, Doug.
Uh, sure. So I am happy to move forward with this now. I think this is one of those situations where it's easy to talk the talk and time to walk the walk. And this could be the time. I personally am attracted to a contract. I think, among other things, possible that this job will evolve, as you mentioned. And the job will change within a year as we kind of get farther into it and go from kind of a setup function to an operating function, and that may or may not be the same person. So I'm happier to go with the contract. I can, you know, with a, with a long-term employee, I absolutely agree. It's, it would be a salary position and we just figure that out. However, for the setup, I can see the justification for, for using the Affordable Housing Fund for a contract to kind of create the structure, if you like, of this thing. And so I would like to pursue that option preferably as opposed to funding it as a salary. I think that's part of the decision we'll come to over the next years. How this, whether it's one person with these skills and one person with those skills, and they're half-time each, or whether it's one person with combined skill, who knows? But I think we have a little bit of finding out to do before we get to that point. So I would prefer to look to that Housing Reserve. I think, assuming the reserve lets us do that, to me, this is a setup cost and it's similar to soft costs in a lot of other projects. So I see that justification for using that reserve.
Thank you. Ted?
Yeah, likewise. But also something very paramount is what Jason said about funding. We want to go for funding. And there's an election coming up, and there's millions of dollars out there floating around. And we should focus on getting that. That to me would be the number-one thing, whatever the consultant is, that he can hire his job or get shovel-ready, job going, and get us a team.
Final thoughts, and then we're going to try to move forward on our decision.
The one, the one thing I'd like to add to this to say, like, the real estate portion of this is so important as far as working with real estate and being able to pick out a real estate in our district that is accessible or tradable or useful for other things. A lot of our low-income housing or affordable housing is at its last legs. And we have to look to redevelop. A lot of our, Castle Rock is basically at the end of its life and is low-density. And that land is owned by the district, and we tend to forget that we own this asset. So that asset can be maybe combined, and we need higher density. So I really would look forward to the real estate portion of that because that's really what we need to get funds from the province.
So, and that's the, sort of the development expertise was something that this group last two weeks ago, and that would have been focused in on too, in terms of, it was like that development planner slash housing expert. Like it's, they actually said, Council Black and Wolf, you could get it. But he can't get it. So, but that type of, that type of skill, I'm on it. So I'm just wondering, what I'm hearing is general support for this. I think council wants to act on this quickly. Am I reading that wrong? Okay. If we can, I think I'm hearing general support for this year funding through Affordable Housing Reserve, if we can. And if we can't, is there something we can do that we can? I don't know what, I don't know if there are any parameters set up on the reserve other than it goes to Affordable Housing. I think this is actually the best way we can leverage that money in this, in this point in our process. And proceed, so if we were to do that, do we need to put, do you need to know an amount? Up to, up to an amount right now, or how would we do that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mayor Heisman, currently it's 50,000. Assuming it was half a year, if we were to start it sooner to go out for a consultant on this sort of project, we would do more than that. 100 for the year, prorated. Hundred for the year, prorated, eighty, seventy-five.
Well, as long, it's not coming out of revenue, so we don't have to tax for it. We do have to put it in our lines.
So revenue would come down by 50 if we in fact we.
Yes, okay. So I think firstly, I think council's saying ideally, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm trying to call this everyone's thoughts, uh, that we would fund this, we would early release funds. Everyone's nodding on that. Fund this through the Affordable Housing Reserve this year for 2017. But I think we may want to in the, in the actual five-year financial plan have it starting to reflect perhaps in the actual budget, actual revenue stream budget. Whether or not we decide in the future how to fund that, but might be the placeholder we need to put in there for the five-year financial plan. And I, I, I think from my point of view, I think there's, there's a timing issue here. There's a timeliness on this, and we would, we would literally, I think that's one of the reasons I was hoping we'd keep a special, is that we consider doing this and actually getting that job out there as soon as possible. Am I, is that generally what council is thinking? Karen?
Yeah, I think you summarized it. I just would ask us to reconsider the wording of development management eligibility program for affordable housing because I don't think, I mean, it's valid, she's too managing.
Yeah.
I think, I think maybe they can decide or work with the community with some other wording to, to know that that has to be put in place. But I just, that is a lot of work. I'm not sure we want to bring that in-house. So that's a piece of it. And also just the wording around facilitate partnerships with third parties, even district-owned lands. We have some landowners with big pieces of land.
And not only district-owned lands, crown lands and other bigger landowners.
Private land and.
Yes, yeah. I think on the eligibility thing, it was, it was interesting. The one thing in my meeting with the mayor's last week, was it, I can't remember if it was last week. One of the things, we talked a little bit about housing, housing authority and the value and yada-yada. And she said the one thing that they are struggling with still after how many years of having a housing authority is eligibility criteria. You know, you have, you have two spouses that are locally, and how long have they had to live locally? And what happens if they change jobs? And how do they, do they have to move? And it becomes very, very complicated. And they, and one of the things that Whistler and it was at the, um, talked about, maybe it was more superficial, like a tangential conversation, was that's the hard, that's the hard stuff. And I don't expect this person to get to a conclusion in a year on that stuff. But it's just something that is just part of the conversation and part of the, the stuff. Whether it's, yeah.
Just to follow up. I don't know, I'm worried if we develop. I just don't think we should.
Oh, that's another con, I think that.
It's the word manage that really bothers me in that sentence.
Okay. You know, I don't think, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit on that one. But yeah, we can take the word manage. Yeah, go ahead.
So I think it would be awesome if we get to the point where we even have to worry about that.
It's true.
We do not have to have that in our design because we don't have units yet. So we need to get to units first. And, you know, if we get to decide who goes in the units, that would be awesome. But we're not there yet, so I would agree with Karen to do that.
Yeah, I don't think, and I, I, that was, I mean.
And there's criteria that B C Housing says, there's all sorts of criteria that can be looked at.
And this is not a final document.
Getting to units is important.
Yeah, so we can, we can massage that a little bit. Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say that, Mayor Heitzman, it's important for the public to know that this is a draft and was for discussion. Staff will come back now that we know more clearly what council is looking for in terms of a contract to start this program with something more specific around that as opposed to a true position.
I think this was intended to just demonstrate the comprehensiveness of the, the need and the job. Whether or not specific responsibilities are outlined, we do play a bit of that, absolutely. Okay, so, just trying to formulate a motion. Uh, Council Blackman will vote for the program. Don't stay. The green stock, we're, but now we're going to have to. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll move the motion that, uh, staff, uh, develop or, you know, that staff put forward a.
The council early release funds for the housing position. I'm not going to call coordinator because I hate that word, but anyway, the housing position.
Can we say contract?
Contract.
Contract.
Good idea, because it is a contract. Uh, the, the housing contract, uh, up to $100,000 to be funded through the Affordable Housing Reserve. And that funds be released early.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was saying.
Is there a second here for that? Set by council, council candidate. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Yeah, go ahead.
I think he wanted to include the position and be sure to.
Oh, yeah.
Follow.
Sorry, I saw Tanya typing it in there. So just make sure that the financial plan is reflecting the possibility of that being a position in perpetuity, but we'll determine that next year obviously. But place where it's meant to be.
Okay. Um, sorry, just to clarify, Mayor, Mayor Heitzman. So we are, uh, the project total, the housing project, it's 100K and.
Up to 100.
Up, up to 100K. And do we have an idea of what we want as our ongoing, starting in 2018?
I, I, I think that's up for, um, the C A O to scope out with the G M in terms of what that might look like in the future.
Could do that.
And I'm not sure it needs to be part of the motion, but that will be reflected in the.
Yes.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, which carries. Is there anything else on this?
Oh, sorry. Um, so essentially, we are, uh, at the part where we start to wrap it up. And keep in mind that the last item that we were going to discuss was the port property taxation.
So, so just to reflect, in the, in the budget, you will take out the housing in the, this year's revenue required account?
Yes, so I have subtracted the, the 50,000 that we had included, hitting taxation for that particular contract. So that's.
Okay, great.
Okay, so with the, the motions that have been put forward and the discussion points that we've had during this workshop, I just would like to put the question out there, whether we are comfortable with it.
We're uncomfortable, particularly with the utilities. No issues with the utilities? Okay. General fund, I, we don't know exactly where we've fallen.
Um.
No, we.
Sorry, just give me one moment.
We're in around the five.
Yes, effective, the effective would be under five.
Under five, okay. So, is council okay to at least bring this draft to the public for comment? Knowing that we will get comments and we might have to. Yeah.
Just, um, did we ever make a decision about the marine strategy, one way or the other? Did we talk about that?
The economic development, you know, we should look at it, wasn't it?
Well, that was one suggestion, and maybe that doesn't work. So, um, but we didn't make a budget decision around that, I don't believe.
Right, we didn't. Go on, and then.
Well, except that, it was on one of the previous slides, there was some economic development opportunity. Was that allocated to something?
Now, that, that is in the same vein as the economic development program. It's 20,000 dollars for the economic development office to have some funds to undertake some of the projects that are outlined in the economic development, if you're failing that, that person is on the run for the years.
So I had a conversation with this person, just to break. And, and from my perspective, um, we had this conversation about marine strategy. And staff were going forward, kind of bits and pieces from various reports that already exist, which will deal with, uh, for me, my, my immediate concerns about the blind channel and so forth. So I don't see a budget component to that. But the question is, the bigger thing, if we wanted to start it this year, we would probably have to put some monies towards hiring somebody to scope it out. When you're talking marine and deep sea and commercial and the bigger picture that Mr. Anderson put forward. So if we don't do that, then that big-picture part doesn't happen this year, you know? But as far as my immediate concerns about the blind channel, I think we're satisfied by the staff bringing us that stuff, which I don't think it has a budget to tell.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I truly would be thrilled if we directed our economic development office to do that strategy. I mean, if we go down the path of another economic development strategy, that's, that's the kind of thing that's driving me out of here. Because we've done that, Doug, for every single year, going back to 1998. These economic development strategies are killing me. But if we took that guy and said, do the marine strategy, that is economic development. And that's something we all want, and we've been putting off for economic development strategies.
And, and we, at the end of the economic review and action plan, we called it a review because we didn't feel like it really moved the dial in terms of actually moving it up. But it did sort of outline some projects and some goals. So, um, I, I generally agree. I mean, these strategies are hard to, hard to see what they're actually moving. And I think the prioritization conversation about how exactly this economic development officer's time is focused, I mean, that's a work plan issue. If we decide we want to, through the economic development strategy, focus then more on the marine side of economic development than other, then we can do that theoretically. The piece that I think Doug is trying to ask is, if we're going to actually move the dial on it, scope out the project, we need to put a little bit of extra money to do that piece of it. Doesn't mean that the economic development officer can't be allocated or their, their work plan can be reallocated to certain markets. Then you want to respond to that?
Sure, Mayor Heitzman, I would prefer if we put something in the budget, say 25,000 for a contract to support the E D O. We've just hired, uh, it's her, actually, Kate Mulligan. Without knowing this part of the interview process, I'm sure there's capability there. But it would be nice to know that there's a budget in terms of hiring expertise and working within.
So adding 25 to the 20. Council, okay with that?
I'll move that if it's necessary.
Okay, we'll move in second as we're debating it. Move by Council A, second by Council Blackman. Council Scott?
I think the entire strategy of economic development is nebulous in itself. So I think that it'd be worth an entire committee of the whole at some point.
Oh, we'll do that.
Yeah, exactly. I just think that picking away at it, not any budget items before you decide on the strategy for the E D O, we may want that person to focus, and we may want to outsource. Um, to put it into economic development is, I mean, if we decide to move a marine strategy, it really needs to be robust. It can't be 25,000 dollars on top of the E D O.
Oh, I, I, and I don't think anyone's suggesting that we do the marine strategy. We're suggesting we actually do all the work that Eric was talking about in terms of really setting out the parameters and scope.
Will it be in time, could we do that in time for the O C P? Because I, we think that would be.
I got it.
Karen, do you think?
I saw him.
But as far as having the group get together.
Uh, Jason, Karen.
Yeah, I agree with the scoping, and, and I think that what I'm understanding from the scoping is that that person is consultant, is going to work with the E D O, and then really focusing on that. And then I would expect from, stemming from that, the product would be, um, a lot of recommendations around, you know, what other communities have done. And then also some clear identification of funding opportunities you can pursue with the providence and the beds to fund a very comprehensive study. That's, that's why I exclude this.
Uh, Karen?
I'm, I'm struggling with this one, but, um, you know, if, if we want money in the budget to scope out a more robust marine strategy, that's fine. But the thing that I heard Eric say is that there are, there's some low-hanging fruit here. And then all, he wants some people in the room to at least be aware of what the issues are. And that's not a budget issue. That's like a call and meeting. And we figure out what, what is long-term that requires to be in marine, and what is short-term, like low-hanging fruit that we can take care of in current policy and O C P updates? And what's somewhere in the middle that we can find or just do normal operations? And I, I, I just.
So I, I completely agree, getting a meeting together to do that. But the challenge is you do this meeting, you have all these great intentions, and they have no money to move forward on any of it. And so I, I, for me, I, I would be happy to put 25,000 in there to actually be able to move this forward. I think it's important, the very first step is the comprehensive meeting. But we're going to come out of that comprehensive meeting and go, oh, yeah, but we don't have any money to actually act on any of the things that came out of that meeting, then that's a problem.
Thanks. I agree with Karen on a lot of those points is that, you know, you can put 25,000. It's not going to address any of the points because there's going to be a lot of points, a lot of people's passions. And we can budget next year if there's something critical that needs doing. Right now, we have an O C P interview that needs policy pieces that, um, and those policy pieces, you know, I like to stay under 5%. You know, and, and we're, and you can start adding little bits of money here and there and not really have it planned for anything. But fiscal management is really responsible of us to actually know where the money's going and not say, well, we may spend money on this, so we're going to have 25,000 here and 25,000 there. But to have community meetings and come up with a scope of practice using the community seems like a really good idea. And to have them inform policy that's already being done. So the, so through the O C P and through the, what we have control on is things that we're already funded for with planners and engineers. So if there's policy pieces that are missing or something that need to be in the O C P, I think getting that group together sooner rather than later is, and having community input that will actually reflect in our O C P, I think, is something we need to start working on immediately. And it is just taking those concerns of the community and, and letting them inform the policy that we're already doing. So I'm not in favor of adding another 25,000 unless that money is scoped out for specific reasons. I think that there's other places where we can actually budget money or have the, the magic fund or the money tree, all the, all the other places.
So we have a motion on the floor for 25,000. And I'm assuming that's from revenue. It hasn't been specified, but I don't know if there's any other options. Is that correct, mover and shaker? Mover and shaker? Mover, yes. Shaker, yes. So that's what I just, it's currently from revenue. That's what's on the floor.
Yeah.
I, I think that we can't just keep adding. So let's find 25,000 somewhere else. Let's not buy, uh, replacement parts, fertilizers, whatever. That's 10,000 dollars.
We just vote?
We can just vote. Are you saying hold the question there? I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Uh, Susan and, sorry, Council, Elliot and Council Scott, opposed, which we carries. Okay. 25 grand in, marine strategy specific, or marine scoping strategy, whatever that's, call it what you want. Specific to the economic development.
Which brings taxes too. Which are 50 out of 25 back in.
Yeah, I don't currently have access to my.
It's in and around five.
Yes, it is, it is going to be around.
It was just over five, with the 60 in there, so it might be just under five. With the 60 open, it might be around 5.30 in.
Yeah.
25, okay.
So we'll, we'll, we'll do our best. It's in that area.
Okay. So that'll come back, that, that will come back to the public meeting on the budget next Tuesday. Okay. So, uh, next steps is the public meeting. Format, do we have an idea of a format that's going to be here, correct?
That, that is my understanding, is that it will be here. And I, I'm looking for some direction on, on formatting.
Last year, we had like, basically, we put all the tables in around, um, in council chambers. And the staff presented the budget, people asked questions, there were some online questions, and that type of thing. So I just want to respect on what we did last year. Is that last year or the year before? Um, is that the type of thing we're looking for at this time? In terms of the public meeting next Tuesday?
Yeah. Why don't we use library instead of this room then? Like if we're going to do a round table, and is there another room type?
The, the only benefit of this room is it's wired. And then it's public. And anytime we move it, as staff will tell you all, if you'd like to listen about how challenging it is to move our public hearing to the E O I tomorrow, it's just, this is by far the easiest space because we can be transparent, we can have it all recorded. That's, we can move it, it's just.
Maybe we bring candles in or something for the lighting.
It's like a, a, a breeze.
Karen?
I don't know about candles. But last year, I seem to recall, we had big piece of paper with the major capital projects. And we did that. And also, I feel like the budget presentation should be about this long.
So that we.
It's like, uh, you know, the revenue ask increases this much.
Yep.
And then people can just ask questions, you know, where's, you know, I think we need to have a where the emphasis is, where the big drivers.
But not like both of them. Yeah, no, 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 I don't think we did that. So I think, so I would suggest again, we make sure we have some good visuals for people and nice, clearly articulated, maybe the big driving, the big drivers in the budget. No, it's on the fifth Tuesday. Is it, it's technically a meeting, is it not? Yeah, it's definitely a meeting. Jason, Karen.
I'm wondering, can we throw together like some swag to give away as, you know, door prizes for pizza coming? Like, you know, our nice Squamish mugs or do we have...
Free taxis?
Why not, you know, do a little raffle?
And maybe we could put that in the announcement to get more people out of, or reward those who did have just taken the time to do it.
And some niddlies, it's still a good thing.
So like, four people came last year. I don't know how many questions we got online, I didn't feel like we got a ton. But what I'm wondering is if, well, we probably don't know what time to do this now, but if we printed off some of those big capital plans and we put them at like Brennan Park and said, here's what we're spending money on this year, what do you think? And left some white space next to it? Then, well, people at Brennan Park or the senior center, they could at least go, why are we buying this? Or yay, I'm so glad we're buying this.
And that's something, yeah, to gather more input because... Can you do something like that? So one thing we did kind of do last week, Sandra and Rachel dragged me around as we talked to a whole bunch of budget managers about some of the big drivers. So there's a little video of, you know, Bob, Bob and Pete talking about this at operations and Fire Chief talking about that there and we went to the grab center. So there is a little video in the mail at some point. And it could be something that we, we might break it down into, because I think it could be too long, they were talking about breaking it down. So we might do a few more. So if you think of certain areas and happy if members of council actually want to do a bit of the interview. Like I would sort of like to do a big interview kind of thing with them, like what's this gizmo and why does it cost so much? Kind of stuff, but happy that we sort of continue to build on that little video. I'm not sure where it is in terms of the editing yet, but...
Targeting Wednesday, we want to be like finishing it up.
But we can add, we can add pieces on it too. So is that enough feedback? I like the idea of sort of having stuff in our public buildings, sort of talking about the budget.
I believe so, yeah.
Date times for the public meeting on that too, yeah. And obviously on our website, Facebook and all that.
It's the ash bags and budget.
On videos, do we have anything on Brennan Park?
Yeah.
At the arena, right?
Yeah, we did the arena. And we sort of talked a little bit about last year, we spent X amount of money on this, this, this. This year, we're looking at a new, like, we have a machine, a new generator, like, some of the big drivers. We talked about some transportation, about some of the corridor trail improvements we did last year and some of the painting and reflecting on what, continuing on that bit too. So, I mean, we just literally touched the surface of a few things. It's just to get people to start thinking about some of the things that are involved. And the fire hall was a big one because of the, we got brading and the utility of the one, all that sort of thing. Okay, so is that good enough?
Happy by me here mentioning, I think, I also wanted to touch base with regards to the next meeting, which after public input, I believe we drafted the fourteenth of February as the final, final review in public information debrief.
As long as his chocolates and flowers.
Oh, right.
It's the last speech, is it the day? So I guess that's what it is.
Okay. And lastly, I don't know who's...
Maybe before we go there, Christina, did we get any online questions or comments?
We have had, not during the course of this particular meeting, but we do have an online comment that I did want to share that came in a little while ago.
Great.
There's an opportunity to know about now. It's from Mr. Graysey and it hits on a variety of aspects of the capital fund that are addressed in his comments. So I'll just quickly read through the comments and then I can share it if you want in more detail after. He feels the new park in Denfield must be linked to a trail network. At Trailheads, he'd like to see info kiosks and more parking at the main Trailheads. Blue trail at the oceanfront lands, I believe he turned to, should not impact popular trails. Webcam should show the more popular parking lots in relation to the webcam expansion. Public access to all municipal dykes should be maintained, especially Trail six four eight, Squamish River Dyke. More safety for bike routes in downtown and along government roads. Provides safe bicycle storage at bus shelters. The extension of the corridor trail bike path should link to Depot Road. There should be trailhead kiosks at Chief Parking, Comfort Mountain Parking, Highland, Highland and End of Curve, Alice's Entrance, Frackendale near Don Ross and Estuary at end of Bank of North Pemberton Streets. The Squamish Estuary Management Committee needs more authority and membership. Sensitive habitat, sensitive habitat areas include all M O E and D F O areas in the sensitive habitat list. Further trails should link Britannia Street to Production Way and access on lots three eight zero zero two, which will be leased at Seventh and Victoria, and three nine zero one zero needed to link Town Dyke Trail one oh eight. So a broad spectrum of...
Yeah, really good, a bunch of good suggestions in there. And some of them may or may not be addressed. I'm wondering if we can make sure that council maybe gets a copy of that, I'm not sure if it's... And maybe refer to relevant staff to do the pieces on transportation suggestions and all that. We could just make sure, there's some good ideas in there for sure. One thing we don't have a shortage of is good ideas. But just to make sure we have some reflection. Okay, port comprehensive, can we do this in five minutes?
Well, I can at least put it forth to council with consideration. I have Mr. Black in here to assist if there are any in-depth questions. But essentially, where we're at is we need to have a discussion as to whether council wants to consider aiding the port. The background for this is essentially that their property taxes estimated from the port, if nothing else changes, is just over six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Whereas in prior year, it was three hundred and eighty-five thousand. So they had a jump, very large jump, and that's in relation to the, sorry. The new dock.
Thank you.
Thank you. To the new dock. So that is the question posed to council.
And what's currently reflected in the revenue?
Um, no.
No aid?
No.
Six, six twenty-three? And Council Black and Wolf, Council Ray, Council Karen.
I'm not in favor of aid, just because this particular one is subject to provincial cap on mill rate, so.
Just a question, is this taking into account the, I forget what it was, but there's a lower rate on a portion of the new improvement?
That is my understanding, I might...
So the non-market increase was nine point three million dollars. Of that, four point eight million is for the new improvement, so it's twenty-two and a half percent. And the remaining four point five is considered replacing the dock. So for replacements, they don't consider the lower rate, it's only for new over and above. Other information, I think that might be useful. Over the last ten years, they've only received an increase of taxes of eight point two five percent, which actually makes about just under one percent, so point eight, over one percent a year. So they haven't had a...
Well, that's the challenge with the cap is that the assessment goes down every year, so their taxes go down every year. Because the caps are... And Council, pardon?
Well, I thought we talked, I thought Scrumstone almost came in and talked us over. We all kind of agreed to...
We didn't agree to anything.
Kind of cut him some slack when I slowly eased it in over a few years.
No, what we agreed with at that meeting, if I may, was that we consider some alternatives. But one of the things that was talked about, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, is that there's a classification that they can go for that helps them and that essentially, in theory, that the federal government would make up the difference. And we said, go after this classification, because it will help your bottom line, but it won't necessarily negatively impact our bottom lines. Like actually giving them a reduction, like lowering their mill rate would do. The other challenge with lowering their mill rate, and this is something I'm not sure we have clarification on, is if we lower the mill rate, it lowers the whole class, not just port. Or can we just, can we do a lower mill rate? So in theory, we don't have any other entities in that class, but in theory, W N D could be in that class.
Well, I thought it was just to be like slowing down the speed of the stream enough. It was just to be... And that's just what I remember in the conversation.
Yeah, nothing was agreed to, that's what they were proposing.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I mean, I suppose we need a motion if we're going to change what's currently going on.
Are we able to do this? I mean, this is aid to a business.
We can set, we can change the mill rate. They're asking for aid, yes. They're asking for...
I mean, I understand that's how we would do it, but basically, we're lowering taxes of one business in a year.
Because there's one business in that class. It's two hundred, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a whole percentage and a bit change.
No, that's basically the same concern as Council Ray is aiding a business, because they...
So my understanding...
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that there is a property tax, a port property tax act that allows us to actually reduce the...
And not reduce the whole classes rate, just reduce, okay. So we can, in theory, just reduce their mill rate and wouldn't affect the overall...
That's my understanding.
Council Elliot.
It's just, you know, in a year where many of our residents saw their assessments go up sixty, seventy, seventy percent, a lot of them. And they're not going to get forgiven any of that, they're going to pay taxes on that huge jug of an assessment. So that is, that is the reality of it. And so I, you know, I'm hesitant to say to one business, and I realize their employer, and I suspect they'll be back in here going, we don't reduce our revenue because we don't want to exceed what we paid last year. But I'm not sure that means it's fair for everyone.
No, I agree a hundred percent, and I think perceptually it's an idea to give them the rate as well. If they set a good example, then every homeowner in town is going to have to pay a reduced tax rate to step up and take on business and exclude them from that process.
So this is all based on the new birth and that new birth allows extra income to come in. And that's why they built and made, you know, it's a robust bill that actually allows extra income because they have an extra berth to be able to bring in more ships. So, and I agree with Council Elliot and Council Ken for, you know, residents don't have any more ability to bring in more income, whereas businesses have to look at their entire model, their economic model, and can raise more, can raise their rates and with their customers. And actually, they have ways to source their income, whereas property owners don't have that option, so.
So I'm generally hearing we're not interested in changing this. So we don't need a motion, this aspect exists, is that correct? All righty.
Wait, wait.
Oh, Jesus. I want to thank Kenya and Linda and Gary and Linda and... Everybody up there for your work today and we'll see you next Tuesday. Well, we'll see you tomorrow, I think we have public hearing. And we'll see you tomorrow, I think we'll do a meeting. Oh, we have to close up the...
Yeah, especially, you wanted to bring that motion up.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to close the special business meeting. Since we still have to close the special, motion determining, Council Ray, Council Elliot, always in favor, opposed, motion carries. And so we're in our special business meeting. There's a recommended motion from the, maybe the whole meeting, with regard to the early release of housing funds. Moved by Council Black and Wolf, second by Council Chappelle. I'll call the question, always in favor, opposed, motion carries. And a motion determining special moved by Council Black and Wolf, second by Council Kent, always in favor, opposed, motion carries.